Ms. Bochamp?
Yes, sir. Ready?
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Bradenton City Council meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, February 10th, 2021, City Hall Council Chambers. City Council Chambers is open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at this meeting. At this time, we will call Pastor Sam Rayner from West Bradenton Baptist Church forward for the invocation, and then we'll do the pledge. Thank you. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for a wonderful city in which to live. And, Lord, I ask for your goodness upon our day. I ask for your wisdom for these members. And, Lord, I just thank you for a community that is beautiful, a community that is good. And, Lord, I ask for your goodness upon us. And it's in your Son's name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join us in the pledge. A pledge...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Bochamp?
We have no proclamations and no presentations this morning.
Okay. All right. We'll go to citizen comment. Citizen comment will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing and agenda items at the appropriate time. And remember, when you come up, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. The only non-agenda item I have is Susie Copeland.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Susie Copeland, 1010, 27th Street East. I wanted to speak to the Council, Mayor and Council, regarding the item that was on last month's agenda regarding the Manatee Associates, 920, Manatee Avenue West. My concern is, and it was entitled Affordable, Attainable Housing. And when I look at the rents that were proposed for a one- and a two-bedroom, it was $1,400 for a one-bedroom, $1,600 for a two-bedroom. And my question that I posed to this council, what employee in the city of Bradenton that could afford $1,400 or $1,600 rent? I think there were some incentives that were given to the developer. And while I am in favor of affordable, attainable housing, perhaps a better definition of affordable and attainable housing in the entire Manatee County. Because when we look at the employees here in Manatee County, how many can actually afford that type of rent? So I ask you to go back. Let's review it again. Let's look at what's included in that. And look at the incentives that we're providing the developer. Is it good for all of the citizens of Bradenton or just a few? And I would like to see the occupancy of those units, not that I'm in charge, but the occupancy of those units, at least let our employees that live and work in Manatee County, the city of Bradenton, that can afford affordable housing. So I ask that you reconsider that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comment, whether you filled out a card or not? All right. All right. We'll move... Yes, sir.
I was gonna... I was gonna address that. Ms. Copeland, the... It's... I know it's been said in a paper quite a bit, or at least reported by individuals, saying that the project is actually workforce-style housing, not affordable. So it's designed for the workforce, and it's a little different multiplication formula on that. And also, some of the rates that we looked at, the ones you quoted, which I saw in the paper, are on the high end. There's also on the lower end of the scale of what we're doing. So I understand what you're saying, but the... I think the information you're getting from the media is not exactly accurate.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sanders?
I met with the Florida Affordable Housing a couple of days ago. And actually... I get... We can talk about it later, but it's... I'm confused. The low end at 80% was 1377, so that was rounded to 14. The high end on the 2020, and I'm assuming that that's March 2020, it's going to increase, because it increased last year, is actually 2,067, not 1,600, just for the record.
All right. Thank you. Anything else from the council? All right. Ms. Bochamp, we'll move on.
Next, we have the consent agenda. We are asking for approval of items A through N.
It's the pleasure of the council.
Motion approved.
All right. Motion second by Ms. Barnaby. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? We'll start in Ward Three today.
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. All right. Moving on. Ms. Bochamp?
Under Business Advertising Petitions, Hearings, and Communications, we have the first reading of Ordinance 3075. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B Related Laws, Article III Firefighters Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bradenton, Florida. Amending Section 6 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility. Amending Section 7 Pre-Retirement Death. Amending Section 8 Disability. Amending Section 10 Optional Forms of Benefits. Amending Section 16 Minimum Distribution of Benefits. Amending Section 24 Military Service Prior to Employment. Amending Section 27 Prior Fire Service. Providing for codification, providing for severability of provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. And again, this is a first reading, so there's no action necessary today. We'll go ahead and set the second reading in public hearing for February 24th.
All right. So we need a motion to approve?
No, there's no action necessary.
We don't have to do anything on this? Okay.
Right. So we can move right into Planning and Community Development, the second reading in public hearing of Ordinance 3069. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, providing for amendment to the city of Bradenton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, changing the future land use designation from conservation to suburban commercial corridor for a portion of property located off St. Lucia Drive and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A. Providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Again, this is a public hearing today, and we'll be asking for a decision.
Okay. So we'll get... Open the public hearing? And then have staff speak? Yep. So we'll open the public hearing.
Very good. Good morning. Marshall McCrery, Planning and Zoning Manager with your planning and community development department. Nice to see the new council seated. I haven't seen you before in this format, so welcome and welcome 2021. I have a brief presentation for you involving this case this morning. It is... Thank you, Sharon, for introducing it. It is a future land use map amendment, small scale, meaning it's less than 10 acres. And this is a legislative item. It affects your comprehensive plan. Again, it's case CP 202156, Ordinance 3069, and it affects property located off of the safe harbor marina. It involves a spoil island. This graphic shows you the location of the property. The one particular harbor marina is right here, and the hotel amenity is located roughly here. And you see, this is the spoil island in question. It's a portion of this island that's being requested to be reclassified. Here, we see the designation of conservation in place and mapped on the entire island. And then the harbor area and the marina area and the hotel and amenities are under SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor for future land use. And then zoning has PDP applied to all. The PDP is basically custom zoning that allowed for the development that's occurred in the area. That PDP is applied to the island as well, but that PDP on top of the conservation has really no uses assigned to it at this point. That PDP zoning would... Should this change be permitted or approved, this PDP would have to be amended to introduce uses to this island. And this is a really, really hard-to-follow little graphic, but it does represent the area. And here's a zoom in showing us the area in question. Again, it's about 1.62 acres, and it's delineated by the elevation of the property. This area is above the two-foot contour line, meaning it's above, two-foot above sea level, and therefore, it's not automatically characterized or classified as conservation. Our comprehensive plan defines conservation as all those holdings that are at or below the two-foot contour. And this survey demonstrates we do have holdings here that are above that, and therefore eligible for consideration for a future land use designation that carries development entitlements. And here are just a couple of other aerial photos, just giving you an idea of its location. Here's where we're speaking of, right here, in relation to this marina activity here. So this request involves the future land use map, which is a component of the city's comprehensive plan. And the future land use map governs uses of land throughout the city of Bradenton, and it defines types and intensities of uses that can be permitted. The current conservation is, reading from the comp plan, "All land below the two-foot contour line shall be considered conservation areas. It's limited docks, boardwalks, or passive or water-dependent recreation uses only." Yes, sir.
Yeah, Marshall, that last picture, can you go back one?
Yep.
Could you remember where that's at? So when we discuss this later, I'm most interested in the photo down, the second one right there.
This one?
Yeah. For later reference, remember where that's at.
Okay. Looking at the request, the request is to reclassify this 1.62 acre portion to the suburban commercial corridor future land use classification. That classification seeks to provide for suburban arterial roadways, uses such as gas stations, car washes and drive-throughs, mini-storage, retail office, automobile sales, repair and service, outdoor storage prohibited, but it's a wide array of uses, some of which obviously would not be appropriate for this property. But it does open the door for consideration. That PDP zoning is where we would refine what use is actually specifically proposed for the property. As I noted earlier, this portion is differentiated because it is above the two-foot contour line. The area of the island itself is about 5.3 acres. So those areas that are not above the two-foot contour line would remain under conservation, and no change would occur there. I do point out, per the comprehensive plan and state law, this area lies within our coastal high hazard area, and therefore residential is not an option we could consider here. Our coastal management and conservation element speaks to shoreline areas and speaks to areas that might be best suited for supporting water-dependent or water-enhanced commercial activities. Those would be things like marinas, hotels, restaurants. All those things are deemed to be either enhanced or dependent upon being near water. An amendment to the SCC designation would assign development rights to this property at a .5 floor area ratio, but it wouldn't assign any specific uses to the property at this point. The property's current PDP zoning does not assign any specific uses, so we would have to go through a PDP modification to assign those uses. And it's during that process we would assess the appropriateness of the proposed uses, as well as the city's ability to serve it and support it. Staff does find that the requested change of future land use designation is consistent with both our future land use element, as well as the coastal management and conservation element, objective 5.5. We do recommend approval of the amendment as requested, and the Planning Commission in its consideration in August of last year recommended favorably for the change as well. I welcome any questions, and I'm available throughout.
Questions by the council at first? All right. So we're in public comment... Or public meetings? So I've only got two people signed up, and we'll open it up, so... Okay. All right. The applicant. Sorry, that's who signed up. Rachel.
Good morning, council members. Mayor Brown, I'm so pleased to be in front of all of you today. My name is Rachel Layton. I'm an AICP planner. I actually, when the development rights for Pareko were first ongoing in 1998, was when I was living in the apartment complex out there. So to me, as a young planner, it was very fascinating to watch all of the history of the planning out there, the last 20-some-odd years. And so it's been a piece that I've followed this whole time. And when I came to ZNS three years ago, I was pleased to be asked to be part of the team to continue to help with the entitlements and research everything. So today, we are here with my team. I have Michael Neal with Land Trust 9712. I have Ed Vogler with Vogler Ashton, and I also have Alec Hoffner this morning for environmental items. One of the things that we have looked at over the years that I've been working on this is we came in and did the four-lot subdivision, but the timing was not right for that spoil island to be developed or have any kind of change to it. But we knew at the time that there was an error in mapping. It just was not the appropriate time for us to bring it forward, because we wanted to watch the developments of the surrounding area. And we really, right now, have a beautiful amenity for our community there with the marina and Floridas and one particular harbor. So this property, of course, is located on the west side of Pareko Island, north of Manatee Avenue West. And this is looking at it from the north, so you can see that there are some beautiful uplands there that we're talking about, above the two-foot contour line. And I have historical aerials here that I want to talk about a little bit. As I mentioned, I've been following this for quite a long time, but when the 416 acres of land on the north side of Pareko Island were annexed into the city of Bradenton in 1998, there was no survey included in the application. It was determined that the property would have a zoning designation of planned development project. Without the survey, it was not then possible to determine the exact amount of upland area eligible for the future land use designation. In reviewing the environmental impact of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, Ardura and Alec Hoffner reviewed the historical aerial imagery of Pareko Island. And this research resulted something that actually kind of surprised me, not having grown up in the area and knowing the history of it. But the spoil island was created as a result of dredging activity associated with the construction of State Road 64 and the Causeway Bridge and the Marina Boat Basin prior to 1973. So this first aerial is 1948 to 1958, and you can see that there is no spoil island there. And then in 1957, you can see that the dredging has begun, and this area is getting more shallow. And then when we moved to 1973, now you can see the spoil island has actually... Is visible now. And then we go to what it looks like today, and you can see the channel and then the marina. And I wish I had even newer aerials, because this is really just a beautiful asset. Currently, the spoil island has a few mangroves with upland areas in the center. The island is also vegetated with significant Australian pine and Brazilian pepper. During Ardura's site visits, environmental scientists did not observe any listed wildlife species. So the history of the future land use maps, for me as a planner, is really quite interesting. Going through some of the older maps, seeing how GIS has helped us improve all of our mapping systems over the decades. In 2000, the future land use map shows no designation was provided for the spoil island parcel, which would have been consistent with the 1998 staff report and the annexation of the property. The 2001 future land use map shows the spoil island was then given a conservation designation on the future land use map. Based on the original annexation, this designation was an error, and no one noticed it at the time. Please note, and the 2001 map was updated to include the map amendment for the commercial for the marina as appropriate. So you can see there's no designation here for the marina, and then in 2001, the marina designation for suburban commercial corridor was approved. And at that same time, commercial could have easily been extended to the island, and we're here to fix the oversight of the island. So in 2005, the future land use map shows island parcel has the conservation easement, but then in 2009, the designation has gone away again and has no designation on the island. In 2018, the spoil island again has conservation designation. Again, it's just an error that we seek to correct today. The timing is also more appropriate today than it had been in the past. So this is the city's GIS map, and given the identified mapping methodology and inconsistent history of the previous future land use maps between 2000 and 2018, the identification of the entire island parcel as conservation, we believe, was a Scrivener's error. In accordance with the 1998 staff report, we're now providing the survey identifying the area as upland property above the two-foot contour line. The 1998 staff report deferred to future land use designation pending receipt of the survey. In 2013, we fixed one of the two problems associated with the future land use designation of the property, which was, the first one was the uplands property located on Pareko Island mainland and to the spoil island. In 2013, the property owner worked with the city of Bradenton to amend the future land use maps for 3.46 acres of upland adjacent to Harbor Isles, and that was changed to Res Low. The requirement of the 1998 staff report, again, was to provide a survey showing the upland property, and city council approved the 2013 map change and declared that the need to make such designation resulted from a Scrivener's error. Now that the proper use of the island is evident, we ask the city council to remedy the mapping error as it applies to the spoil island. The property is in an area with a mix of various comprehensive plan categories, and the properties to the south are within the suburban commercial corridor, so it is an appropriate extension of the designation. Properties to the east are within the residential, very low residential category. The applicant is requesting this change to suburban commercial corridor to provide water-dependent, non-residential accessory uses compatible with the uses adjacent to the site within the existing suburban commercial corridor category to the south. In my professional opinion, as a certified planner and as someone intensely familiar with this area, this change is wise and warranted. So next, we have the GIS map, and as you can see, all of the north end of Pareko Island is in the planned development project, which allows for a plan to come in front of the council for approval when the specific use has been identified. Pareko Island, again, has been zoned PDP since 1998 annexation and requires a plan. And it's turned into a beautiful master-planned residential community and resort, including a hotel, restaurant, and marina. The residential units have separate amenities from the resort, and the approval of a map amendment today would require a site plan come before the council prior to any site improvement plans to be submitted to the city. Today, the council is not being asked to make any determination of future uses for the island, only to amend the future land use designation consistent with the original intent of the annexation. So the property owner may come back to you, the council, at a later time with a site plan. We do have easements worked out with the marina. The spoil island is benefited by an existing easement through the hotel and marina development to the south for access and utilities for any future development approved through the planned development project process. So use of the spoil island as an accessory use is appropriate. And I use these lovely photos from the website, so I want to give them credit. Development to the south of the spoil island has been approved through the PDP process for the Compass Hotels and Floridas Restaurant, as well as the marina. These uses are consistent with the 2001 future land use map amendment to allow for the suburban commercial corridor category. The construction of the hotel and restaurant are now completed, and the businesses are now open, and we believe these to be an asset to the Bradenton area and our tourism. As we have watched the evolution of these uses and the development of the 400 acres in the northwestern portion of Pareko Island, we believe the timing is appropriate to request the city amend the future land use map to suburban commercial corridor to allow for a water-dependent accessory use on the spoil island. And in this photo, you can see the proximity of the spoil island to the marina basin itself in the photo, and how it can lend itself to become an amenity to these uses. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend this request, and I'd like to now introduce Michael Neal to finish the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Rachel. I'm Mayor Brown, members of the council. It's nice to see you this morning. All very spread out, so I apologize if my head's on a swivel. It's a little bit uncomfortable, but anyway, thanks for your time this morning. I want to start by saying, sort of, we've been a long, long time getting to this point, as some of the members know. So today, we want to, as you've heard, amend the future land use map, not to make any decisions on specific uses, but to set the stage for bringing back to you a detailed plan for a use that we've long contemplated, which, as Rachel mentioned, is an accessory hospitality use. As you heard, obviously, this project's developed very slowly. We have one of our four houses under construction on the north side, adjacent to Harbor Isle or Harbor Sound, it's called. But today, as Floridas was being developed, you know, we forged a relationship with them. The hotel, the boutique hotel and restaurants, very successful. We've worked out a deal, you know, maybe not signed and not cast in stone, but we have a very good idea to create an accessory hospitality use. So we're going to utilize the parking, we're going to utilize the easements, utilize fire protection, utilize all the resources of the hotel and parking and allow ultimately to construct a boardwalk. And I just want to, you know, share some ideas with you today, which, of course, we'll present in much more detail later. But basically, an accessory hospitality use, low impact. We're not increasing any density, which, of course, is not allowed under the coastal high hazards, so it's... There's no density, there's no residential density. We believe it's a good accessory use. I want to provide, and I don't know how to click, actually. Rachel, do I click the arrows? We have some photos for you. So we... Obviously, these are real photos. The others were computer-generated graphics, but they're quite accurate. This is a view, actually, from the top of the hotel. So you can see, this is not a natural feature. This is a man-made island. It's beautiful. It's great that mangroves have recruited on it. Obviously, we all like that for a lot of different environmental reasons. But this is a man-made island, and we want to use only the upland, you know, non-protected areas of that island for the accessory hospitality use. Like I said, we've created a good relationship with Mr. Brerly, his partners, and the operators of the hotel and resort. I think they've done a great job, obviously. They opened up in the middle of the pandemic, and I think that's a real, you know, an asset for sort of that gateway from the Barrier Islands, which we all know are doing very well, but it's a gateway from the Barrier Islands, you know, to, obviously, the western gateway of our city. Just a little bit of example of some stewardship. I mean, there used to be 60-foot-tall Australian pines on this island. We were approached by residents of the community to the east, and I guess I don't have a... Well, they're right here on the left of your screen, but we've already cut down a significant amount of invasive species to improve the view of our neighbors. We did that for free. We didn't seek reimbursement for them. I mean, you can see those sailboat masts. There was already invasive species 60, 70 feet tall. So that's just an example of what, sort of, we've done so far. In the future, we're going to come back to present to you, hopefully, obviously, once we get your staff's review and approval. But we want to present, like a tiki bar-type structure, an event space, accessory hospitality use, so all the facilities will be supported by the Compass Point Hotel and Floridas Restaurant without, you know, additional impacts to traffic and things of that sort. So we sort of think this is kind of the magic sort of middle, in between maybe the most extreme thing that might be allowed and in between, you know, nothing. So we obviously thank you for your consideration today. We want to point out that there's... We're not asking to make any binding decisions about uses or how tall things will be or this, that, or the other. Just a matter of, you know, sort of, it's a cool island. I think I would like to turn it into a public asset and public resource. It does have mangroves. It is pretty, but it's not a natural feature that we're developing, per se. It's a man-made, you know, byproduct of the dredging. We think this will be great use for the public and hope to present it to you in the future. First step of that is changing what we believe is, you know, an oversight on the future land use.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnaby?
Mr. Neal, just for the record and for clear transparency...
Sure.
You do live across the street from me.
Yes, of course. Yes, of course.
And you were my son's tennis partner in high school.
Oh, yes, of course, yes.
And we have not discussed a single thing about this.
That's absolutely correct. I'm glad you pointed that out. I forgot to mention my address for the record, two nineteen twenty-first Street West. I am Mrs. Barnaby's neighbor. I've had no communication with you about this.
Everybody's got to live somewhere.
Although this is a legislative matter, there's nothing improper about having communication, so, but we haven't, so.
We have not.
Anyway, thank you for pointing that out very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
So we're in the public hearing portion. For anyone that didn't sign a card, anyone wish to speak?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I had one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Probably of Ms. Layton or maybe Mr. Hoffner. It is, we have seen it, and Mr. Hoffner, if you're going to opine, I need you to come to the microphone, please, too. You have removed Australian pine. You've stated there are Brazilian peppers there. We know that those two species are invasive and that they are bad for our environment community.
Yes, ma'am.
So will all of those be eradicated from the island?
Yes.
As much as you can?
Yes. So the way the islands can figure now, excuse me, is the perimeter of it is vegetated with mangrove. And so those won't be impacted at all by the proposed development in the future, but we will remove all the invasives, and they grow right up to the mangrove areas.
Okay.
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Alec Hoffner. I'm with Ardua, environmental consultant, working on the project.
No problem, thank you.
And the mangroves, will you be doing any kind of, I know that by law you're allowed to trim them a thirty cheer. Will you be doing that or are you going to leave them in their native state?
There's no plans right now to do mangrove trimming, but that doesn't mean in the future that we couldn't go to the state and ask for some lawful mangrove trimming there. But there will be a boardwalk, as Michael mentioned, probably going out to the island. So there'll be some minimal trimming back of the mangroves to allow access for that boardwalk.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Barnaby, if I could, yeah, just comment. Yeah, we have no intent of trimming the mangroves, and as you can see on the slideshow, the mangroves are actually thirty, forty feet tall. I think they provide a visual buffer and even like a noise buffer. So the tiki structure hospitality use that we envision is going to be facing the northwest, sort of facing the skyway where there are no mangroves. And if I could, if you could go back, I mean, there may be some very small trimming associated with like a twelve-foot boardwalk getting to the island, but, yeah, that, well, the second slide is perfect.
This one?
So, yeah, so you're looking at that from the northwest, and where the mangroves are is where the marina is. So other than a boardwalk to get to, that's perfect.
That's good.
Because the boardwalk would be...
So the boardwalk would be actually about like one o'clock on this, between one and two o'clock. Other than the boardwalk, I have no plans to trim it or otherwise.
Thank you.
Was that, sir?
Yes, sir.
That big area in the middle, my, from knowing how trees grow and having spent a lot of time dealing with Australian pines on any island, could you go back to that center, that picture you had of the blow-up of the island? I would guess that, yeah, I would guess that that whole clearing in the middle probably was loaded with Australians, which tend to choke everything out. They have such a large cannibal root system that literally nothing else grows on them. So by removing them, the invasive species, it really opened up the land.
Yeah, it was sort of cool. You can see they're sort of stacked like lichen logs right there. Alex's team, Alex's team floated a, like a high lift on a barge out there to cut down, to cut down the Australian pines. And then, of course, we didn't want to haul them off because there's no need to haul them off, so we stacked them, and they've basically decomposed. But you can see they're starting to recruit again, especially like in the ten, eleven o'clock of this frame, you can see the Australian pines growing again. So, and I included a picture, and it's, I mean, it's fairly accurate, but it's O'Leary's tiki bar in Sarasota. They did like a riprap, obviously, above the two-foot contour line. They did maybe like a two-foot riprap bulkhead, had some nice sand above that. Obviously, you don't go, you know, you don't go beneath it because there's oyster shells and things. So I don't see, I don't personally see the public like entering the water because there's a big oyster shell bed on the north side. They'd cut their feet and things. But my vision is, you know, they walk, obviously with shoes on and things, to, you know, over the bridge, their cars, everything is parked at the hotel, they're staying at the hotel. They walk. We have a native structure, tiki structure built by the Seminole Indians, which Floridas already has a large one. And, you know, that's like, it's like a gathering space with cabanas as accessory hospitality use. So I would be hesitant to commit to absolutely no mangrove trimming, just per your question, Mrs. Barnaby, but, I mean, my hundred percent intent is only the boardwalk to get to the island is the only impact that I can contemplate, and of course, Alec will permit those.
Well, and it is a good buffer, and it does mitigate some of the noise coming off of the island near your residential area.
And if I go back to my picture from, I mean, I literally was with, I mean, I was literally staying on the top of the hotel when I took this picture on the top, and then the bottom is just a zoom-in of it. But, I mean, you can tell those are thirty, forty feet tall. So, I mean, I think potentially you maybe only see the roof of a tiki structure from the top floor of the hotel. You probably not see any of the tiki structure from the ground floor of the hotel. So we think it's in concert with the neighbors, and we look forward to presenting a more detailed plan. Obviously, we have to ink out some of the business plans with Floridas. Mr. Brerly's written a letter of support on this, I believe it's in your packet. But as soon as we dial in on the deal, we'll come back and release very specific construction drawings, so I can answer very specific questions about placement, orientation, walking, parking, all those things.
Anything else from the council? All right, thank you. Give one second to clean the area, and then in the public hearing, is there anyone else wishes to speak? Anyone else wishes to speak? Anyone else? So we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Sanders, second by Ms. Coachman in discussion. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I think the, this seems like a reasonable use of this land. It was very helpful to, I knew it was a spoil island, but I didn't know it was for the roadway, you know. So it goes way back in nineteen forty-eight, nineteen fifty-eight, certainly was on the GIS by nineteen seventy-three, but it seems like a good use. You know, when it first came up, I thought it was the island. There's another big spoil island out further out to sea, which I think is for the dredging, for the shipping channels. And I know that that one is more, I know a lot of people use that island. Kids go, my daughter used to go out there and camp out in the summer, she had high, Manatee High kids. So, I mean, and then when I went out to the island with my wife and came back and specifically looked at this island here, the reason I was looking at that photograph, when you look at it from coming over on the roadway and the bridge, it's literally surrounded by commercial usage, you know, the new hotel, and then more importantly, I think the marina, which I consider to be bordering on industrial. So it's in a, it's in a pocket where to say it's a conservation area would be not being completely honest. It's already been, you know, included in a development. So I don't think that, I don't think that this, you know, I don't have any problem with this. It seems like a really good use for a leftover piece of land from a road dredging, and I could envision this being a real asset to the, you know, the hotel and the guests and something that brings people here. It'd be kind of a neat feeling to be able to walk out to a deserted island, kind of Gilligan's Island, you know, type of fantasy, so, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. All right. Hearing nothing further, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, Mrs. Beauchamp?
Yes, under new business, we have Carl Callahan, city administrator, to speak about the Riverwalk Extension ninety percent drawings and guaranteed maximum price approval.
I think today is the day we're finally ready to move forward. We've gone through a long process of preparing for the drawings on the Riverwalk Extension. Today, we have Kim Lee Horn and Ron Allen from NDC, who is our construction manager at risk on this job. I think we want James to give an update of the presentation. It's not a whole lot different than what you have seen in the past, because as you get further and further along in the drawings, it gets just into more detail as to how somebody's going to build it as opposed to what it looks like. I've also asked James to, for Mrs. Barnaby, indicate where we've done the SEPTED items, and they were prepared for that, to talk about the thing. SEPTED is how you take a park-like setting, have the police look at it, and make sure that you're not creating an attractive nuisance in some places, and how you design the park to make sure that it works well for all visitors. So we'll be doing that. And certainly, last but not least, we get a GMP number from the construction company. It is, in a GMP, it is not a bid situation. It is more of a bid from their standpoint. It is open bid from theirs. They go out and get their subcontractors to put this together. That's why they are called a construction manager rather than the contractor in this particular instance. And their final price of four point five three-three million dollars is actually under our original proposed budget of four point eight the first time we saw this, and I will go through later to show you again how those dollars are budgeted for us to be able to complete this project.
There we go. Good morning, members of the council. For the record, James Pankinen with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. As Carl said, we want to spend just a couple of minutes here kind of going over, giving you an update on the plans. I know that we have some new members of the council who were not maybe as intimately involved in the planning process, so certainly want to bring you up to speed and make sure that we address any questions that you have. As Carl said, since our last update, what we've really been focusing on is the details of construction and those elements, working with NDC on some pricing questions, going back and forth with them in terms of answering any RFIs and stuff that they have related to the plan development. So we'll do a brief recap of the master plan, give you an update on the ninety percent drawings, open it up for questions, and then also any questions related to the GMP itself. There we go. As a reminder, for this section of the Riverwalk, you know, I think it's important to understand the context that this is within the neighborhood. When we think about the Riverwalk as it is today, it's in the downtown area. There's a lot of spaces for events, gatherings, large events, and very active uses. And the context of this is really a lot different than what we have as far as the Riverwalk today. So through the planning process, that's one of the things that we heard from the residents is that the park plan should respond to the context of the neighborhood and provide uses that are really consistent within that context. So it's a lot more passive than what the current Riverwalk is. We've got an open lawn area on the south. We've got boardwalks on the north to facilitate connectivity, signage, shaded seating, and those types of elements. I think what you can see from the plan here is that one of the things that was also very important during the process was to make sure that we maintain the existing tree canopy that's out on the site. And so the features that we've proposed and have provided in the plan really respond to that and are kind of worked in and amongst the existing canopy trees. So this is the ninety percent site plan that we're working with, really just kind of a black and white CAD drawing version of the color concept that you just saw. Again, you can see the pathways on the north leading to the future Phase Two connection, the boardwalks which are on the river, which kind of are on the north side of the mangroves. There was an existing dock that we're proposing to be renovated that you can see going out into the Manatee River. And then coming back into the site, it's really pathways, shaded seating areas again, and open lawn areas for gathering. We're going to walk through each of those kind of three main sections here, one by one. So this is the northwest section. Again, we've got preservation of the existing mangroves and a boardwalk on the north side of that. We have passive overlooks. If you look at the overlooks on the boardwalk there, those are oriented towards the sunrise and sunset, so it kind of gives you a neat viewing point and a nice vantage point along the river for those areas. And then as you move to the right, we have the boardwalk coming back into the park as well as sidewalk access working its way back into the park. On the northern part, just north of Second Avenue, again, we've got preservation of the existing mangroves and all the mature trees on that part of the site, the expansion of the pier. We do have a bioswale, which we've implemented for water quality treatment, which is on the sort of the western part of the site in that area. And then the pathways and the shaded seating areas kind of work themselves in and around that bioswale. So that will help contribute to the water quality for the overall area.
Where is the reading room?
The reading room is located here. It's kind of this area here. So what we're providing there is artificial lawn surface, like we're doing at a lot of the playgrounds, which creates a really nice surfacing for people to sit on. The Old Manatee Children's Book that Realized Bradenton has been developing will be on display there in sort of an outdoor format and as well as a loner kind of reading library where people can get children's books and then, you know, share story time within that area. Another key feature of this part of the site here to the north is the living shoreline. Currently, there's an old seawall that's kind of crumbling and in disrepair. We're going to be rebuilding around that with riprap and creating a living shoreline with oyster domes and oyster bags, which will help to kind of restabilize that shoreline as well as provide and create habitat. Moving to the south now, again, working all these features in and amongst the existing canopy trees. You can see the trees that are sort of outlined pretty faintly on there, but we have taken a survey of all of those and have incorporated those into the plan. We've got an area on the south with the circle here where we're proposing some recreation of the existing historical signage that's on site. So working with reflections of Manatee to update that signage, make sure that we have the content and are still telling the story of the site and the importance of the events that have taken place there, but just updating the signage in that area. And then over here, we've got a new gazebo as well as celebration of the original spring that was on the site. We've talked about different opportunities to celebrate that spring in the past, from actually daylighting it to recreating some portions of that. If you recall from the last presentation, for those who weren't here for that presentation, what we found when we did some excavation there was that there's really not a reliable amount of spring flow into that area because the spring has been diverted and piped before it gets to this location. So we don't have a lot of reliable water source to work with. So what we're proposing is that we would celebrate that area with public art or signage that kind of talks about the spring's history in that location. Here's a couple of views of the oyster domes on the left, as well as the living shoreline on the lower right-hand side. And so again, that'll be kind of the northern edge of that northern part of the property. Again, softening that shoreline, creating a more, you know, opportunities for resiliency and addressing some of the changes in the tidal elevations there. There are also a number of grants that are available for that, and so we're looking into those opportunities as well. As Carl mentioned, we did take our sixty percent plans and provided those to the city. The police department looked at those and offered a number of really great suggestions in terms of how we can implement some of the SEPTED principles, SEPTED being crime prevention through environmental design. And so what sort of things are we proposing that we need to be aware of in order to make sure that it's a safe place for people? Some of the recommendations that they had were additional lighting on the western side of the park, and so we have added additional light poles within those areas in order to make sure that we have a nice, you know, level of lighting across the park site, not only adjacent to the sidewalks and the parking areas, but throughout the park. Providing lighting at the shelters, at the gazebos in the form of, you know, sconce lights or something in the roof of the actual structure that would provide some illumination underneath the shelter itself. And then also lighting at the crosswalk on Second Avenue. From a landscaping standpoint, one of the SEPTED principles is making sure that you can have views into the park for police drive-bys or for neighbors as they're looking in, so making sure that there's open sightlines. So we've modified the landscape plan to address that. One of their comments also was related to views out onto the boardwalk, particularly from the shoreview development. And so since there are some mangroves there, there will be some permitting that we'll need to do in order to kind of cut windows into those mangroves to facilitate visibility. But as I was out there last week, I also noticed that there's quite a bit of invasive vegetation there that can still be cleaned up, which will certainly help to improve those sightlines between the park and the boardwalk. And then in general, what, one of the strategies that we want to do with the landscape treatment is to provide windows kind of from three feet above ground to seven or eight And then in general, what one of the strategies strategies that we want to do with the landscape treatment is to provide windows kind of from three feet above ground to seven or eight feet so that you have that clear sight view. So from a plant selection standpoint, we're looking at material that fits those requirements as well as maybe some selective pruning to make sure that we have those sight windows. From a seating standpoint, one of the comments that we received was to make sure that we're providing seating that doesn't encourage people sleeping on the benches, so things like arms or maybe changes in elevation of the seating as well as opportunities to inhibit skateboarding. So you'll see that in the in the specifications of the furniture. From a site access standpoint, one of the comments that we had was maybe looking at adding speed bumps along Second and Fourteenth. And so I think that the city is looking at doing some milling and resurfacing as part of this, and so that's something that could be implemented with part of that project as well. And then throughout the park hardscape, making sure that what we're providing is level and stable surfacing for people to walk comfortably on. We do have a couple crossings of that bioswale area here where we have a boardwalk crossing, kind of like we have at the existing Riverwalk. And so one of the suggestions was to provide handrails on that boardwalk. The elevation change is such that it's not required from a building code standpoint, but that could certainly be provided if desired, but that's one of the details that we're still finalizing. A couple other comments that they had were surveillance cameras, which could be added in. I think the strategy there would probably be to provide some future conduits that could be utilized because cameras at this point were not part of the original budget, but we can certainly set the park up to be able to accommodate those. And then also no fishing at the boardwalk, which is not intended at this point in time, just to help reduce the litter and and, you know, fish cleaning and those types of activities. So we'll have it signed and marked in order to not provide fishing. So these are a couple of views, renderings from, you know, our our drawings which represent the intent that we're trying to portray here. You can see here in this view that there is, you know, we've probably exaggerated the vegetation a bit in this rendering, but certainly there is a need to make sure that we do have visibility from the apartments out to the boardwalk and have a kind of safe setting and safe safe atmosphere. So cleaning out the exotics as well as cutting windows as necessary into those mangroves based on the permit that we get.
On this picture here, you said there's no fishing on the boardwalk, does that include that pier?
That was inclusive of the pier, yes.
We we weren't going to-
Mr. Roth, when you also when you look at that pier, when you look at, that's a dead bottom out there.
Yeah, I know it's pretty shallow, yeah.
The sand is about that far away.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
Here's another view of that pier end with some shaded seating areas, and so again, that's one of the comments that we received in terms of providing some lights at the bottom of that canopy to to have a safe setting out there. The spring area, again, as I mentioned, we've talked about a number of options, this is an older rendering, but what we're proposing is that that area gets treated as a public art or historical signage opportunity. I think there's a number of things that could be done from a public art standpoint that helps celebrate that. But again, our initial desire to kind of daylight that spring and work that into the site just did not prove feasible with the amount of water flow that that we discovered there. Here's a view at one of the bioswale crossings, so this the boardwalk crossing that you see there is where we got the comment about the handrails. Again, we can kind of talk through that, it's not required from a building code standpoint. We do have toe kicks there that would keep a wheelchair from going off or help discourage, you know, bikers from veering off. But we did not have handrails there in order to keep the view kind of open.
Is this on the north side of Second Avenue, or is this the mineral springside?
This would be on the north side.
North side? What's those, I don't, are those usually, those are going to be man-made?
Yeah, so this-
I mean, what's the purpose of that?
This area here is kind of-
There's no water flow through there, yeah?
No, but it is designed to treat the stormwater requirements that we have for the site because we have added some parking and some impervious areas. And so that will all go to this bioswale and be treated before running offsite.
So that's necessary for runoff, isn't it? Because there's nothing there now.
Correct, yeah.
I didn't know there'd be that much runoff, but it it and that's required?
Yes, we're required to treat the water before it leaves the site, yes.
Okay.
May I ask?
Yes, yes ma'am.
I'm not real good with maps, I'm going to have to admit that. Where is this in relationship to the other excavation site in Mineral Springs? It was the Angolan history or something? Is this going up to that or not quite?
Let me go back to the site plan here, so a lot of the excavation that they did last year was kind of down in this area here. And the area that we were just looking at, the crossings are right there and right there on the northern part of the site, just across, excuse me, across Second Avenue.
So that area that was excavated is going to be part of this and not necessarily address the histor- history of that area?
What we've talked about is developing some historical signage and maybe recreating, you know, some locations where they discovered post holes and those types of things. I know that we have been working with Dr. Baram, who did the excavation. They're still actually in the process of categorizing categorizing all of the finds that they have, and that has been slowed down, I think, pretty extensively from COVID. They lost access to their lab as that became a testing site and everything. So that's been slowed down a bit, but we have been communicating with them. We think that the best strategy would be to maybe implement some of those findings through signage or things that could be added over time.
They did find some good things, they did.
So the bioswales are not going to be on the mineral mineral springside too also?
It sort of starts, let me clear this here, actually, let me go back to bigger view. It kind of starts on the southern part here. And so that will treat, you know, the parking that's added along this part of Fourteenth as well.
That's the minerals, that's the south side of Second Avenue?
Yeah, and for reference, the spring is right here, right in the middle there. And then on the north side of Second Avenue-
That's where the little bridge is or?
Yeah, that's where the bridge is in this kind of squiggly area here is the is the bioswale treatment for that area.
So it could be designed with a little architecture there, could it not, with a little kind of, you know, just what you represented there?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on, just have a couple more renderings to share. This is a view from the reading room area, you can kind of see the change in surface color here, that's would be the out the grass surface that matches kind of what we've done at the playgrounds. It's a really nice place where you can lay down with with a book or something and have an outdoor classroom there or a number of different activities.
And and real quick, that is the forever lawn that we're talking about that is working great at the park we have now, and it's it's not the grandfather grandmother generation, it's really working well from what we understand through Public Works. Less maintenance and holding up well. So far good, so, Ms. Barnaby?
And just for clarification, I mean, I know this is just for rendering purposes, but any kind of benches, you've you've stated you're you're going to make sure that they're not something that someone could take over and sleep on all day or that sort of thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be the intent, so, correct, this is just rendering, but I think what probably is not shown in there would be like a center arm that we could add to help kind of discourage that.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the public art that you're kind of showing here, is who, how is that process going to work?
We would manage that through the city, much like we did for Phase One. As part of the GMP that NDC Construction has developed, they have held an allowance for public art. And so the idea would be to work through the city's process to procure that art that fits within that allowance that they've carried.
I'm new, so sorry. What's the process? I mean, is there a, is there still a public art board, are they going to be?
Yeah, there's still a committee.
Well, I think it depends on which one you're talking about, there's a group with Realized Bradenton, and in the past, there was a city public art board.
Right.
And I don't know where that stands right now.
I I just would really like to make sure that whatever we get is going to be appropriate and can survive in the elements. I think we've had some misfires in the in the past, and if we're going to spend money on public art, I want to make sure.
And we'll be able to work through that process, whether we bring it back to us or if we do have the board coming forward. Right, it'll still come back to the council.
What we did with Phase One was there was a call to artists and a bunch of people submitted and several, a few were selected. And then as part of that review process with them, not only understanding what they're actually proposing, we talked a lot about materials and footings and how it would actually work and function within the park, so I would envision something similar to that process.
And for our new councilwomen here, and all of us really, that hopefully what we're going to do is work through, especially with Jim McCollum and the Public Works Department, to learn what worked well on the Riverwalk to extend it here so we don't have additional maintenance or additional things we have to work with. So that's going to be important to learn from the good things we did and eliminate the others, so I think that's very important to work through. Thank you.
The last view here is of the living shoreline, so again, softening that seawall that is deteriorating, creating an opportunity for ecosystems and habitats to develop, particularly through the installation of some of the oyster bags and oyster domes that that are being proposed. Oops, sorry, one more view. This is the, as I pointed out on the on the boardwalk earlier in the presentation, we had a couple areas that were oriented towards the sunrise and the sunset. We think that's a great opportunity for some branding for the city, you know, good morning from the Riverwalk or something like that as the sun comes up and and that structure kind of frames that view. So that could be a public art thing in itself there that that could be expanded a bit as well.
Can you go back to the picture just before that?
Yes.
And this is is a question from from me to Jim, Public Works Department. See all the greenery there, is that realistic that it's going to be able to be kept like that after, because it looks great when we put it in, but how is it going to be maintained, or is there other ideas you might have?
Well, are those plantings that are proposed?
So I'll I'll touch on that, part of the living shoreline is some proposed plantings that are a lot more natural in their appearance, and those tend to, you know, grow and 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 spread and kind of take over time as the shoreline develops.
Talking about the the flat grass.
And then back behind that, we are proposing behia grass throughout some of that area. One of the things that we're showing also is underneath a lot of those existing trees, which are pretty large, doing mulch beds that would help, you know, because not a lot will grow underneath those with the root zones and the shade. And so providing some mulch beds that help to kind of clean up that ground surface.
All right, any further questions council has right now? I think that's where we're at. All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I think for one thing, when you look at the north and the south sides, the north side is much more tree heavy, so growing grass, it's more difficult to tell. On the south side, there's a lot more open area, and you can see in the design, there's a lot of play areas or the open areas where you can't get sunlight and actually grow grass.
Mr. Allen? You want to give her one second to clean that podium? Stay in with the spirit of what we're doing.
Not sure if that's a shot of James or I.
It's a shot that I'll get criticized for not doing it, somebody will find something.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Ron Allen with NDC Construction Company, and I'm pleased to finally get to this point today. Just a little brief history, back in October of two thousand twenty, you selected us to be your construction manager for the project. Since that selection, we've been doing our pre-construction component of that contract, which included working with staff, working with Kimley Horn on budgets, materials, deliveries, all those kind of things that go into the plans you saw today. The nice part about coming up after James and and Kimley Horn is we basically say what our GMP we're presenting today includes all those things that you saw. I just want to, I'm not going to go through the budget item by item, I will answer any questions that you have, but I want to just point out a couple of things. One is there was some discussion about security cameras. While we don't have those specifically located within this in the site, we have a budget allowance of seventy-five thousand dollars for putting those cameras where we ultimately feel they should go. And see, some of that is probably hard to do, it's easy to put on paper, but the reality is sometimes you want to wait till you're partly done with construction so that you don't end up having problems with sightlines and other things that you really can't see on a two-dimensional or one-dimensional drawing, so.
Ms. Barnaby?
So, Mr. Allen, the figure that you just quoted us is to be able to run whatever wiring or, again, I I don't do construction. It does not include the cost of the cameras.
No, we we believe that we're going to be able to run the wiring and the cameras within that budget. We hope that that's the case, again, it's a matter of how, to what level do we want to to secure the the entire site visuals of the project? Do you do you pick prime locations, do you pick every location? I mean, there isn't enough if it's an every-location situation, but if it's in what is a typical prime location area, I think we have that covered. The second thing is is you talked a little bit about public art. One thing I do not want to do, and I don't want NDC to do, is we're not picking any art. That's something that's up to the community, the committees, and people that are much more qualified to do that than we are. But we're carrying two hundred thousand dollars in this budget for that art, so. And we, that's pretty consistent with what we were budgeting in Phase One, and I think Phase One had a sufficient amount of art along its its pathway. So that is included already in our budget. And the final thing I'd probably mention is we're also carrying roughly two hundred, about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in contingency. And what that will allow us to do is it'll it'll allow us to finish some things that that the plans just just can't, because no plan can be a hundred percent accurate. There's just, and we can't be a hundred percent accurate in our in our construction, but in most projects that we have, that contingency allows us to do some additional things as the project goes forward, and we feel comfortable that that money's not needed for the project, where there's two options, one either can come back to you as a savings or it can be, you can add enhancements to the project. That's one of the good things about construction management form of of a project, it's open book, you'll be able to see everything that happens. And any savings that we get, whether it's buyout, whether it's a product reduction in cost, or whether it's contingency that's available at the end, that money comes back to the city either through a reduction in our in our GMP or in enhancement to the project. If the team decides that that scope or the city council decides the scope allows us to add something that maybe wasn't in the budget. So with that, what you have in front of you today is Exhibit A to our AIA document that you approved in October. And and hope that you'll you'll approve that today so that we can actually start getting some dirt moved and actually see the park moving forward.
Mr. Roth, did you have it up first?
Yes, I did.
Okay, he had that, and then Mr. Sanders?
So several questions, you just you just touched on one of them. One, so we got a four million five hundred thirty-three thousand dollar maximum price guarantee, and it sounds there for financial impact, it says that there's six hundred fifty thousand from developer Hatfield. So, it says on my paper here.
That's mine, not his.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's in agreement that the developer of the apartments and the city have, that money I think is already in place.
When we received that money, because we knew it was going towards this project, we put it in the sales tax. So when I when I'm budgeting sales tax, I'm budgeting sales tax plus that six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So so my point is, so five, it's four fifty-three is the price, but we've already got six fifty, six hundred fifty thousand in escrow? Is that is that additional money or is that?
That's money that we already currently have.
Okay, all right, that's-
I'm prepared to discuss how the budget is.
No, I I'm just, so I just I just kind of want to point out that there's there is that money in there from the developer.
And that's why I put it in-
Yeah.
The write-up, to make sure that that money that was promised was paid last year and is in there available to be used.
Okay, and then so we're, this is this is a proposal approving the ninety percent guarantee, but my question is going to be-
It's a hundred percent guarantee.
Okay.
Correct.
Or ninety percent of drawings?
It's based on ninety percent drawings, because that's the drawings we have at this time, but we're guaranteeing the price.
Okay.
As long as you don't, as long as you don't add scope into the last ten percent.
My next question is, when can you start and how long will it take?
Well, we're estimating about ten months for construction, and and we're hoping, James, with permitting wise, we could start in the next probably thirty days. And we're hoping, James, with permitting-wise, we could start in the next probably 30 days to 60 days. I'll add.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. We did, we have our, we had our meeting with Swift Mud. Initially, we got comments. We've addressed those and have resubmitted that as of last week. So they have a 30-day clock. So we would anticipate getting additional comments within the next three weeks or so, finalizing and addressing those, and then moving forward. One of the things that we are doing is kind of bifurcating the permit so that we have the upland portion as well, and then the boardwalk, which can be a longer lead time, and then the shoreline, which can be a different track as well. So we've tried to structure it such that we could start construction on the upland activities while the boardwalk is still being reviewed, because that can take quite some time.
Yeah, as far as NDC is concerned, we're committed to starting work tomorrow or as soon as permits will allow us to move dirt and start the process. One thing I also failed to mention, which I really think is important for that area, is part of this GMP also includes resurfacing, I believe.
Charlie, it's 14th and?
14th and Second, which those two streetways are somewhat deteriorated if you go down there. They will be redone as part of this program also. So that Public Works doesn't have to come in and do that out of their budget at a later time, so.
Mr. Sanders?
Are we going to try to do this Phase One in conjunction with Phase Two?
That was a question that you would have to ask Kim Lee Horn and staff. Our intention would be yes. We would like to have a seamless movement of two, but that hasn't come to fruition.
It's logical to do both at the same time, because it's like, I mean, you know, it would be-
The part of this that we looked at was got to get Kim Lee Horn in here, getting this part done. This was obviously the first. We've already told them to move forward on the next two phases as far as going with drawings. They were authorized to move forward with those. So the way we look at it is get this going, get those drawings done, probably towards the halfway point or midway point. Or if we're waiting on something like the boardwalk, there's work that can move on over. I had those discussions with Mr. Allen too about the way that we work through our general conditions are that we're not sitting here going, okay, we're dead in the water. Because the general conditions is just a matter of how long a job takes, not a ton of other things. How long you have superintendents and everybody on the job. So that if we're able to sit there and, hey, we had to slow down here because of certain issue, we're able to move forward. So now the onus is on Kim Lee Horn and James to get us pushed into the next area. Those next areas are a little easier, I think, because there's not quite so much going on. This park is fairly detailed. Those items that take you all the way down to Ninth, it's not as difficult to do. Probably the point is the more intense area, but beyond that, it should be relatively easy.
But they can do both with the groundwork. I mean, there's no reason to complete one and then start another one and bring back the same dozers that you're using over here. It's like, wait a minute, why didn't we do it when it was right there?
There are definite, there are definite efficiencies. From our general requirement standpoint or general conditions, our staff can handle Phase One and Two during that same time.
Some of the construction that doesn't require a design.
That's correct.
Right. So that, you know, the infrastructure underneath and that kind of stuff.
That's correct, yeah. One doesn't have to be done before you can do two.
Because our ultimate goal here is to connect the Riverwalk to this. And I don't want to see us, you know, have an interruption at, why, wait a minute, you told us this and we're stretching this out. And so I want to see it completed.
And the good news on the second phase, which is that goes along between Ninth Street and connects back to this, it's all, I want to say uplands, meaning we're taking out roadways and doing things which aren't needed for traffic once you get past the Atwood's house. So there's areas to be able to work on where there's things we can do, which make a lot of sense at water.
And more than we need the waterside permitting, which is somewhat of a time constraint.
Anything else, Mr. Sanders?
No, that's it.
I saw Mrs. Barnaby first and then Mrs. Coachman.
Mr. Callahan and Mr. Allen, with regards to Phase Two and Phase Three, have those plans been shared with the police department for the SEPTED review?
They're not that far along.
Okay.
They are, they were conceptual only at this part. Those are very open areas. Those are not behind mangroves. The only place that you'll probably really look at that much would be out on the point, out in front of, beyond the apartments, there's a point that goes out there. That may be, because there are mangroves, significant mangroves in there, and what amenities we're putting in there to make sure that those are very open. The rest of it is going to be a very open boardwalk.
I understand that. I would still request that we let the SEPTED expert look at it.
Yeah, and I think in the first phase, that occurred at the DD stage where there's enough on the drawings for them really to do a complete review.
I just know that, you know, once you guys get going, I just want to make sure that that is not, does not hamper your ability to do Phase One and Phase Two at the same time if it hasn't been reviewed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. Coachman?
At this level, I guess this may not be that important, but I would just like to at least go on the record stating that when you get into specific designs, that there is some significant representation of that Angolia area with the historical reference that it has. It's a very important, it's a very important thing for the community.
Absolutely, and we agree with you on that.
Thank you.
We'll follow through with that.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Are you finished, Mr. Allen?
I am done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think the last question is, what do we need to do to be able to pay for this? You know, we've set out a budget which this still falls within. I think one of the things that, if you look at our current sales tax budget for this year, I budgeted $3 million. I had no idea when we, where we would be at. If you look at it in discussions with NDC, he believes that we will probably be at about 80%, 75 or 80% complete for this year's budget, which is at 9:30, ends 9:30. So when we look at the sales, I prepared a whole budget adjustment. I didn't want to presume that this was going to pass and bring a budget adjustment today. Tamara has the budget adjustments, I think, up in her office that I'm preparing for the next meeting of the 24th, which shows the money we would move around within the sales tax. We have approximately $3.4 million of unspent monies carrying forward to our 1920-21 budget. Therefore, we will probably need to move about 800,000 of that into the $3 million that we currently have. So covering the cost of this is no problem. From that standpoint, we're still on track for the funding of it, which include all the funding sources I laid out up front. And whatever we're seeing now from this should not adversely impact. So we are prepared to go with that.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you. So at this point, no further questions. We need a motion to proceed.
Motion to proceed.
All right.
Second.
All right. By Mr. Sanders and seconded by Mr. Roth. Any further discussion? We'll start the voting in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie's five to zero. Thank you, great presentation. And I think one of the things for me with, kind of always has been since I've been around here, and I know Mr. Sanders is happy with, will be with this, and Mr. Roth brought it up, timing, you know, because we move slow. But this is going to be very important to show the citizens that we're moving forward in a very positive way and staying within budget. So thank you very much for that. All right, next is Jim, MPO priorities. And real quick, before you start, yesterday I was at the county commission meeting for no other reason than just there was some time. And they had their MPO priorities come up. And they made a statement that stuck with me. And as a previous MPO board member and now back on the MPO for the city, that if we don't ask, we don't get. So we got to start asking for more. And, because they said Sarasota gets a lot because they ask for it. So as much as we can ask for and get done, we need to start pushing that more, in my opinion, so.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, Mayor, council members. This is somewhat of a formality associated with what we've submitted to the MPO for project funding. Basically, the MPO had provided us with a list of projects from their long-range transportation plan, their 2045 plan. And they've identified a number of projects that they asked us to make submittals on, some of which we decided were kind of out there for us. So we picked the top four, which you'll see on the priority list, associated with things that already have funding established by the MPO. So if you look on the priorities list, you'll see the four projects that we have listed that have multiple projects within them. Most of it related to development of complete streets, which are streets that include multimodal transportation means for bikes and pedestrians. Thank you. It also tells us the funding source. So if it's a transportation alternative, the top three projects are all money that is set aside in what's called transform tomorrow funds. Okay? And so basically, we submitted on the top four. And we've ranked them internally in bringing it to you folks that asked for additional input as to whether or not you agree with the priorities. So the first one is what's deemed by the MPO, the Pirates Baseball Area Access, which is essentially complete streets in the zone that encompasses Ninth Avenue to Seventeenth Avenue, Fourteenth Street West to First Street, that area. Looking at opportunities to provide for complete street improvements in those areas. We had previously submitted for a complete street project for Ninth Avenue, which this is part of, you know, it's one of the projects that's a part of this. And again, the money is already set aside for that by MPO. The next is the Manatee Trails Alternative. This is one. Part of what we've been doing from the engineering side of things is looking at making sure that we're coordinated in all our efforts. So recently, we had our mobility study that was submitted that includes talking of bike trails, pedestrian paths, connectivity throughout the city. These projects are all conducive with that and coordinated with that so that we provide some cohesive approach to how we're going about it. We also have the Third Avenue East Extension Project. Again, that's one that we've had on our list that we've submitted to them before. I mean, that's one that, yep, yes, sir.
You knew I was going to add.
Yeah.
So where are we at on that? I mean, aren't we budgeting for that now through city funds versus for MPO?
We have looked at potential acquisition funding as far as, we have, we've looked at what the right-of-way acquisition, if it's going to be an expanded roadway from Ninth back to Seventh, at what that would entail. But that's a, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough one to get that property.
So, and I'll say it now, because I was going to say at the end of the meeting, but I'm going to call for a workshop next Wednesday. Would that be maybe some more information on what we're doing with some of it to put on the agenda? But, you know, I mean, again, kind of if it is MPO, obviously, how long is it going to take? Because we know some of these are five-year projects on the MPO work.
Right, and these are all in the first five years.
Right, the first five years. But, Mr. Sanders, that may be a good thing. And we can, you know, if you can send it, we can add that to the workshop next Wednesday to be one of our talks, because that would be more information we can get out and then understand more of it. So I don't know if that's a good idea or not, but.
Well, it goes with our Riverwalk and the connectivity to downtown. And it's important, I think, to that Riverwalk project.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it needs to have a pretty high priority, but.
Well, the main reason, the main reason we ranked it lower, and again, we can adjust this, because this is what this is for, is for us to establish what your priorities are. We ranked it lower only from the standpoint of the MPO doesn't provide any funding associated with property acquisition.
Right.
So the others are study phase projects. If, you know, for the Third Avenue Punch, there's going to have to be property acquisition and that goes to what you're talking about where we're at.
Well, we can talk about this more later, but you and I talked about making it not a full-fledged two-way street and do something different that would take out that, that big dollar value that you're talking about.
From the standpoint of the connectivity to the Riverwalk, so this would be somewhat of a shortcut on Phase Three of the Riverwalk extension. It certainly makes sense to us that that become more of a bike-ped path than a roadway connection. And that will definitely impact or reduce, I should say, the dollar value of anything that we do. We still have property acquisition one way or another.
We still have property to do that.
Yeah. But as far as the road reconstruction and all of that, that drops if you do that.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, well, I mean, on that topic, the point I was going to make when Mr. Sanders brought it up was we talked about this in the Riverwalk planning, that if we were to do the cut-through, that saves having to take the Riverwalk lighting and, you know, the program all the way up to Manatee and then come back down to Third. And basically, it would cut out all those blocks of going up, because the Manatee is the only place to cross and come back. It would actually make the park better, because it's ridiculous to make people go all the way up to Manatee just to come back down to the river. And then also, I mean, because I, you know, I've been talking about this for well over a decade, that it's nice to have pedestrian bike, but what we really need for the people that live in there is a opportunity to get a car traffic into, from basically the hospital back into the neighborhood. So like a one-way lane. For anyone to get out of that neighborhood and go westbound, all they got to do is go on 64, and it's already a one-way street. It's no problem. The problem is, if you're over at the hospital and you want to get over into the neighborhood over in there, you got to go, you got to run the gauntlet. You got to figure out how to get across 64 West and then go up to Third and then come back and then cross 64 West again.
Right.
And so it's not necessarily a two-lane or pedestrian bike, but it would be, I think we should aim at one-lane traffic, one-way.
That's doable. That definitely is doable with what we already have in place out there.
Yeah. And then going back, and so this is, this is going to go, someone might want to continue on this. I was just curious on alternative Manatee Trails, that bike pedestrian bridge crossing, where it's great. I, that's great, I don't know where you'd put it. Where, we just did, we did, the bridges for the bridge project, for the dredge project. We've got one bridge we didn't touch, but are you talking about another bridge?
This would be strictly a bike-ped, that would probably, the initial concept was to come off of the Point Pleasant area and go over to Riverview Boulevard. It's a daunting task to pull it off, I can tell you that much. But, I mean, if you want to keep people off of Manatee Avenue, which is my desire from a bike standpoint, you need something of that approach. Now, whether it ultimately goes there.
Further down.
And that's what the study, that's what the study aspect of this would look at, is where does it make sense to do that? Maybe it's a, call it a lane extension on the Manatee Ave bridge that's dedicated strictly to it.
That's what I said.
That might be a-
Down more to Manatee Avenue.
Realistically, I think that's probably what would end up coming out of a study telling us to do.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you, Jim. Continue, are you done?
The only other, the last project is one which is again, creating bike connectivity for the eastern portion of the city. In order, if you're coming on a bike from the eastern portions of the city, you get to basically the DOT bridge that crosses over the Braden River. And there's no sidewalk. There is a, yeah, there's a lane on the side of the road and you go. We've previously submitted to the MPO for this as providing a means to get across that bridge with a bike, because that's one of the last connectivities to the eastern portion that is a limitation for us.
And obviously, I have the special interest in that because I live in that area.
Absolutely.
And it also ties in with the connectivity to the Riverwalk again.
Yes.
And so it connects all our community together. So I'm disappointed it's not the highest priority. And maybe you want to talk about Second Avenue. Where are we at on that to make that connected down to Braden Castle?
Well, we have, we have the plans in place. I'm happy to present them at a workshop for you guys to see what we've got. And we can go from there.
Okay.
We can, next Wednesday, that'll be a good thing to discuss.
I just want us to focus on the connectivity, that we don't get interrupted, so why didn't we do that when we was right there? we do that when we was right there?"
Yeah.
You know, 'cause it's all, and it's just logical.
The concept of a one-way roadway connecting at Third is much more logical than a two-way, because anybody attempting to avoid Manatee Avenue to go eastbound is gonna have to take a very circuitous route. They're gonna have to go through the apartment complex. It's not intuitive.
It's not.
It's gonna be difficult. If you're trying to avoid going east, to go eastbound, then yes, it has a lot...
And just for the public's information, we're not talking... How many feet is it? Five hundred feet?
I'm sorry, where?
From Sixth to Seventh, the cut-through.
From Sixth to Seventh is, yeah, it's probably about three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. That's all we're talking here. We're not talking about major, major, you know, not a bridge. It's like, come on, three hundred feet? We can't...
That three hundred feet requires two properties to be purchased.
I understand if you're gonna do a double, if you're gonna do a two-way traffic, but you might be able to get, I thought we might be able to get one-way in there without much cost.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Well, and I think part of the benefit, we're doing one-way, but we also are making pedestrian and bicycling both ways. So it's gonna benefit where we want to connect the Riverwalks, though.
Right.
And I think the one-way works a lot easier.
Right. Well, it's much easier to do it, and then maybe down the road, you can, you know...
If we see something.
See something that...
And again, these were priorities that we laid out initially. If the council desires us to reorganize these four in a different order, we're more than happy to do so.
Well, we can adjust these as we go, too. I mean, we put 'em to 'em, and then in the future, we update as we go.
Correct.
If something changes. 'Cause again, this is not something, we put on there, we get funded, and we do it next week. It's a five-year process.
Oh, that it were that easy. Oh, that it were that...
When did it get down to five years? 'Cause it used to be eight.
Right, yeah. It's the five-year work plan that keeps adjusting as we go.
Correct.
So it's good. But again, I think, like I said, and I think all of us would agree, let's, and we're doing a good job, but how can we do a little bit more sometimes when we work?
And we are, you know, we're in the process of, we have a project that is funded for a significant bike trail component of a missing piece that will be along Southern Parkway from Twenty-sixth to Forty-third that will create bike paths going both ways for that. That's one that, we've got the initial design laid out. It's funded out, I believe, next year's money, so that will be something that I will be happy to sit down with you and talk about as to what that entails.
Okay.
And I think some of that is why we've held off on a little paving there, 'cause we knew it was coming on part of Southern Parkway, so people realize...
Southern Parkway needs love.
Right.
It does need love.
It does, but that was held up, one obviously, with me in Ward Two. We've got a good plan now, where we're not paving and coming back in a year or so...
And digging it up.
And digging it up or doing something, so that was great, great plan.
To that end, I would also encourage any of you who haven't been over to take a look, the project that we're doing in Ward Five right now on Thirteenth Avenue East and Fourteenth Street, particularly Thirteenth Avenue, where we've widened the roadway and put a bioswale, you've heard the term bioswale. We've put a bioswale in the middle of the roadway. That is part of the concept for the improvements on Southern Parkway. So if you wanna get a look at what Thirteenth Avenue looks like, that's kind of the initial concept for what would happen on Southern Parkway.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'd like to move for approval of the prioritization list as presented to us today.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council.
All right. All right. And then the next agenda item is under Resolution 2102. It's a resolution, City of Braden in Florida, updating the Code of Conduct for elected officials, providing for an effective date. Now, we have done this for many years, as far as on the council, and we had to update with the current election. We've talked about it at the workshop, went through it. Is there any further discussion or questions? And then we do have public comment from someone, or would rather go to public comment first and then let the board go through it? Any... Okay. So why don't we go ahead and call up Susie Copeland? Come up, state your name, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Susie Copeland. And as I was sitting there and I was going through the agenda, it's really not just this Resolution 2102. As I look at even the project priority ranking, when I pulled that up on the agenda, I get that summary. I would have loved to have seen the actual priority list. Is that something that this council, whoever takes care of it, Carl, that we at least get a listing? If I pulled that up, I will see the list of projects that are being proposed to the MPO.
Susie, Ms. Copeland, one of the things that you'll see on the top of the agenda says, if there's something you're wanting to view, please contact the clerk's office.
Okay.
That's on the top of the agenda, 'cause certain things can't make it on there for purposes of how, in what format it's in. That's why it says across the top of the agenda, if there's something there you want, please contact the clerk and we can supply it to you.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And one thing, before, I was gonna, at the end of the meeting, I was gonna bring that up to talk about, because some things, obviously with ADA and all the different regulations, cannot be formatted correctly to put on there, but we are trying to be as transparent and get information out, 'cause that's very important to me as well as the rest of us. But unfortunately, it's just hard to get, and if you've seen things in the past around this country and state, people are taking advantage of that in the wrong way, so, but we're trying to get it out there. If you need it individually, it can be sent, or we can get it out in positive ways, not that. Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Copeland. I've had that complaint by numerous people that they don't get all the information, and it seems, it leaves the perception that we're not telling you intentionally, which is a wrong perception to have, and we're, I'm not saying we're making excuses, but we're using ADA as a, as a reason for not providing that, and I just looked at that document for the MPO, and it's only a page. Why can't that be attached? So somebody doesn't have to... I mean, you know, people say, "I'm not gonna call up and do that."
Well, we're not making excuses. We've been through lawsuits and stuff that...
We've never been sued on that ADA, have we?
Yes, we have.
We've got a current one going on, but that doesn't involve this.
No, we were sued and lost, because we did, so we have had to update our website to meet those regulations, and unfortunately, that's what we're saying. We've had to come up with ways so we don't continue to have to pay out money for things that we're doing, that, so, we, 'cause again, and I don't know how much we can get into, Sharon can explain more, but it's costing us, it's costing you a lot of money, because somebody sued, and if, you know, we had to settle, and again, I don't know how much I can say from the legal standpoint, maybe Scott can help, or...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And your time is not...
Susie, you're done.
Time is not... I know, so we'll give you, we'll give you an extra minute now. We'll start over.
If I could just add, nobody would be happier than the clerk's office to put all of these things on the agenda and on the website the way we used to be able to do before the lawsuit. We are not, not that we don't wanna be ADA compliant, however, the work involved in trying to make this happen, and the complaints from the citizens, and rightfully so, that we can't be putting everything out where you can easily find it, is very difficult on all of us. We talk about it every single day in my department. It's probably at least a half of an employee, if not a full employee, to try and keep everything ADA compliant for the website and for the agendas. It takes a ton of time, and we're not as, we were so excited about the new website, and then we were not able to put everything on it that we wanted to because of the constraints of this. So we're following the direction from our ADA attorney. We are in touch with him frequently. What can we do about this? How do we get a map on the website? How do we do these things? We're trying to be compliant, but we're also trying to be as open as possible. So when you do reach out, you'll see throughout the agenda packet, contact Tamara, contact clerk, and I promise, we are extremely diligent about sending things as soon as they are asked for, because we realize that we want to be transparent and we're doing the best we can.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm gonna use the same example. As you put the summary there about the MPO listing, priority listing, someone had to type that up, am I correct? Had to input that data. Why not include just the listing? You know, I'm not saying what he showed here, but at least put the addresses of where those priorities are. What's the location? I understand your ADA requirements and the sensitivities of that, but there are some things that can be included, and I call it a summary sheet, you don't call it that. I call it a summary sheet. It's just the list. Rather than me going the extra step to get citizens involved in this political process, those areas that you can add those particulars, please do so. It would, for me, and even though I have the time, everybody does not have the time to go that extra mile, to make that phone call to City Hall, the clerk's office. Am I gonna get an answer when I call? So there are some obstacles even to calling City Hall. So that's really all I'm saying. And as I listed on my comment, that it was the 2102. When I see code of conduct for elected officials, what are we expecting? That was the first question that came to mind. It was not being critical. I just wanna know a little bit more information as a citizen. That was, this is all this about, and I do believe, get me wrong, don't get me wrong, I do believe code of conduct is critical in this atmosphere that we live in. So I am of support of having a code of conduct, but I do want to be able to, as a citizen when I pull it up, that I will easily understand what's being said and what's being done.
And that is definitely the goal of my office and this council, I know, is to get as much information out there without costing the citizens extra money, which, when it goes to those situations, is a waste of money.
Absolutely.
Because, not that we don't like attorneys, but we don't wanna give them as much money as we can. It's not as bad as a reporter, but the attorney is there, so, I'm just kidding Ryan, so, we haven't got on him yet today, so...
Thank you.
No, but thank you, Susie. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Sanders had to say...
I was gonna say, point of order here. All right. Part of code of conduct is transparency, and that's what causes conflict and arguments, is the lack of transparency. And if we can't figure a way to do that, this agreement is not worth the paper's written on. So do we have, you never got to answer the question, do we have, have we lost ADA contract, ADA suits? I know we have one currently pending that's being litigated, but do we have any past litigation that has been, cost us money?
Well, let's just say, first of all, I'm not engaged in that suit. I don't know what the current status is of the suit that was filed. The City of Braden is not alone in that, obviously. Manatee County was sued. There were local governments all over the country that have been sued as it relates to the website ADA issues. That's something local governments across the country are struggling with right now. Hopefully, it is something we're gonna get a fix for soon. I know there've been a number of legislators that have gotten involved to try to get the Department of Justice to issue some, issue some regulations on that subject, but at this point, we're, you know, we're...
But have we lost any money on ADA in the past?
It's not a monetary issue that's the concern, is when you, when you, when you go out here... Let me answer the question, please. When you go into this, whether you have a settlement agreement and you have to fund monies, or part of your agreement says you have to act in a certain way, there are very specific requirements of the ADA that you have to meet, and they are federal standards. And when you get sued, potentially, you say that you will have to comply with a higher level than we want to really be able to comply to, and that's where we are. We have to comply with a standard that now is taking it. The reason we haven't paid money yet is that it is not finalized at that point, but it is, we have had to agree to what level of compliance we're gonna have to be at, and that's what we're trying to adhere to.
Okay.
So that, and when you get into it, you get into federal law...
I understand what you're saying.
Not the state law. We're the federal law.
I don't disagree with you in that, but we're, aren't we living in fear of something that's, it's not, it's not real? We've not lost any money. That's not a true statement. We not expended any taxpayer money for this. There's always the potential to do that, and we...
We've expended taxpayer money to...
Oh, wait a minute. I thought we had a code of conduct. I've been interrupted.
Continue, please.
Okay. So you see there? Controversial issues requires an open, free speech debate, and that is not what I witnessed in the document, 'cause we just had a living example of it right now. It is, gets contentious, and everybody's allowed to speak, and I was just interrupted.
Sir, I'm gonna interrupt you on that, because I'm gonna answer that question that you just put to me. No, you're speaking and we're allowing you to speak, so continue. You ask a question, somebody tried to respond to that question at the time. So there is a code of conduct, and if somebody interrupted, myself or anyone else, we apologize for that, but we are allowing you to continue, but when you ask a question, sometimes people wanna respond to it at the right time. So continue, please.
We haven't expended any money on ADA, and other cities and the county is providing these documents for transparency. Why aren't we?
Are you ready for an answer to that? Because we have expended taxpayer money, and the attorney fees we've done, and everything that we're, when we're having to fight this case. And I don't know, again, legally, if there's farther we can go because of a settlement, so I'm trying to be careful with the attorney, and I don't know, 'cause again, they're watching this to do the other parts, too. So we have expended taxpayer money, and that has been gone. So Mr. Callahan?
This can be a council decision, okay? There's always council decisions, and Sharon can back me up one way or the other on this. Some governments decide they don't care and they will take the risk. Some of them have not been sued who take that risk. A lot of it depends on your risk that you're willing to take for that. And I think from, from a standpoint of, if you have been sued, a lot of them have not, if you have been sued and you continue to go in conflict with what you say you're going to do, I think you're taking a greater risk than if you haven't been sued yet and you're just deciding to do something. You're deciding to take that risk early on. But once you've been sued and you're agreeing to, to a level, a certain level, which is a high standard now, that level is a high standard of compliance, and you don't, I think you don't want to flout that and go in the face of it, saying, yes, we're agreeing to do it, but not really, we're not gonna do that. 'Cause now you're putting yourself, I think, in, right back in the middle of that contentious suit you may be in.
And that, one of the things that I'm gonna say, that from the standpoint of, I agree with you, Mr. Sanders, that sometimes you gotta stand up and fight, but when you fight and you win, but you've spent ten times the amount of money fighting it, that when you didn't, and fighting, to me, in this part of it, is legislatively to get the laws to change. And unfortunately, that's a difficult battle, too, but that may all be something that we are gonna talk about on this council in the future, that I wanna talk about legislatively, how we address some of the things that we wanna do in the city. So a lot of these things are coming up, and again, from this administration, five weeks old, maybe, we are going to be transparent, and we are going to try to do right. We are gonna represent this community in a way that others aren't in this community, and we are not gonna disrespect our citizens, ourselves or anybody else, and especially the people that we're here to serve. So I agree with you on a lot of things, but it's how we do it is what we've gotta go forward with and be positive. So, and again, I don't know if, I know what I've heard and seen from within the office, but I don't know what I can say with some of the legal stuff, because we can be sued for that, and I don't want to go down a road that we can be sued for more, you know, 'cause there is some settlement things that have come out, so...
Sharon, is that a pretty clear depiction?
It is. I want to, I really just want to say, I want to assure everyone, your city clerk is making sure we are as transparent as possible. We are doing everything that, through our attorney, everything that we can do to make sure we are distributing any document anyone asks for in a timely manner. I promise you that. That is my goal, and if I let you down on that, then you need a new city clerk. That is, that's the way it goes. We have choices that we can make, exactly like Mr. Callahan said, and I will go out on a limb here and say, there are people who have made this a cottage industry. They are looking for people to not comply with ADA requirements on the website, so so they can go to court and try and sue people and, and reap a reward for that. It's, it's become, it's become a cottage industry, and we are trying to protect the city. That is why you have me. If you want us to go a different direction, I follow your lead, but my job, in my understanding, is to protect the city, and this is the best way to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I was next.
Mr. Roth?
Okay, so, well, several, several things on this. One, we, we were gonna do Resolution 2102, which, you know, I've been doing, been signing the documents since, what, 2013, I think, so. And then this year, you know, because of charter changes, there were attachments, which the city, city charter and all that stuff. Normally, this just gets handed to us, we don't have a meeting on this. So for some reason, that was put in, I don't have an issue with it moving forward. But what I wanted to point out was, now that we're on to, now that we had a citizen comment come up to talk about Resolution 2102, but we're moving backwards to the MPO priority list, the, this is kinda what happens with government, it's like the weird, we're, when I woke up this morning, I didn't know what was gonna happen today. I came down here prepared for everything and hoped for the best. You know, the, as far as, as far as records and ADA, I mean, I get it. You know, people have been suing municipalities for a long time. It used to be Atlanta League of Cities fought, you know, years ago about, there was a cottage industry of people coming in for open records. They'd come up to a, a person working at a bait store on, on a pier in Venice, and, and and they'd say, I wanna know, I wanna see your financials for this, and the bait guy would say, I just sell bait. And the next thing you know, attorney ambulance shows up and, and you know, there's a major lawsuit going on. So that we always have to watch out for that. On the other hand, you know, this is a Florida sunshine state, it's open records, open, so there's an expectation that everything's gonna be open. So we have this, this extreme, you know, ambular chasing attorneys, you know, looking for ADA, and then we have a responsibility to, to open records. And then as far as today, you know, how would we know that the priority, I mean, the speaker had every right to ask about that, because this is what we do for a living. But how would we know that that was gonna be the issue? To be honest, when I woke up today, I thought the conservation Eastman on the island was gonna be the issue. I thought there was gonna be a lot of environmentalists in here from, you know, different things, and we're gonna be talking about whether that's actually, you know, a conservation, you know, island or not, and it turned out to be not. So it's just, it's just, it's a moving ballgame. I think, I think, I think moving forward, and this just shows the difficulty, and we're all passionate. We all have our things that we care about, and, and we're trying to do the best we can. And, you know, I'm all for civility and moving forward and all that stuff. And I understand when people, and, and the other thing I'd say, just lastly, this is a new administration with new council people. But how we got here is over the last twenty years, and we may still be wearing some of the sins of our fathers, you know, that we're gonna have to get past that period of time, you know? We're gonna have to all just let the past go, move forward, and that's hard, that's hard.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Roth. And what, what I've asked the staff to do is to notice every meeting that we have in the city, because I'm gonna be very out there in the community. It's very important to me, as this administration moves forward, that it is a different administration, and it's different things that we're gonna do. We are gonna bring up this. The reason this is on the agenda today is because I asked, talked about it at the workshop, comments, sent out emails to everybody, we talked about it. Now it's out there, because it's important to get the information out there. It is transparent. I can't help what happened the last administration or the one before that. But we can work forward to get information out, but also to protect the citizens of the financial difficulties that some people wanna take advantage of. So that's important to me. I'm gonna let Mr. Sanders talk first, and then Mr. Callahan.
Looks like Jane's gonna.
I know, Mr. Sanders was first.
I, I get a monthly report on our legal expenses, and I haven't seen, has it been, have I just not seen it? Scott, for ADA?
Yeah, our firm is not engaged on this.
We have no legal expenses.
Not with them, we have other.
We have a perceived potential.
No, we have another attorneys that spend.
Well, isn't that included in your report?
No.
It's not?
No, we have, we have labor attorneys, we have insurance attorneys.
I understand. Wait a minute, we have a pending suit for peddling on the streets, and I see a bill for that, and that's an outside attorney, isn't it?
No, that.
Your office is handling that?
Mm-hmm.
So our, our legal expenses are more than what, what's being reported to me?
Mr. Sanders, if I might interrupt, I'm sorry. This suit has been dormant for a few months, because the person that brought the suit is under sanction right now, and so the suit is set aside. So you have not seen a bill recently, the bills are on there, and I can, I'm happy to point them out to you.
But this is being fought by multiple cities and counties, is it not?
I, I'm assuming so.
Separately.
I, I know, but again, I, I, I believe, you know, you're always gonna have a potential of a lawsuit. You do it as individuals, you know, I'm being sued by the previous councilman. Yeah, that's true. There's always that potential. And if we live in fear to be, and make that as an excuse for transparency, shame on us.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yeah, if we're, if we've made representations to the, it sounds like we've made representations to the court that we're gonna hold ourselves to that standard. I'm not comfortable whatsoever with all of a sudden just saying, oh, well, let's just go ahead and provide it anyways. That does not sound wise or prudent.
It's a specific standard, it's called WCAG 2.0, and it's a level that we meet. We have screen readers where, where my folks have to listen all the time to every document that's been transformed into being ADA compliant. We, we run it through a screen reader as if we were someone with vision impairment, and we make sure that the screen reader captures those standards of the WCAG 2.0. So that is specific in the, in the legal documents that we've been served. And we agreed, like Carl said, it's not a lot of money, it's living up to that standard that we agreed to as part of the settlement, which is what we're doing right now. And we will follow direction, you know, I'm, I'm following the, the lawsuit, but we will follow direction however you choose to move forward.
Ms. Bochamp, the county provides it.
I can't answer to the county, Mr. Sanders.
Well, but we all live in the same community, and if the county can do it, we, the city can do it. And I'm saying the city should do it. I'm, I'm, it sounds like I'm the only person that cares if they have transparency, so, fine, let, let it go at that.
But, and that's again, that's a very false statement. Every one of us up here care, every one of our staff cares, and our staff is doing it to protect the citizens of this community. And if there's things that we can put on there, that, beyond there, I know the Clerk's office is trying all day long. The other thing is, is, is I would be, I'm going to now inquire from the county and try to look at what they're doing that supposedly is different than us, and at what cost to them. Because if it comes down to, well, they've hired somebody, and they've hired a department to do that, are we willing to do that part of it, if it's gonna cost us X number of dollars? And if we can also give as much on there as we can, and then put a little caveat that would help someone like Mrs. Copeland out to get a little information, but save her taxes going up, because again, if this happens, taxes are gonna go up. And that's, then how many people would be in here? There'd be more people in here complaining about that than they would of trying to get the information. And hopefully legislatively, we can fight this to get out there. And maybe, again, that's something that, I don't know how efficient it would be at times, but maybe there's something we can do, talk about legislatively to get some of this done. Carl?
Yeah, part of the problem with this is it's, it's not state legislature, we wish it was. If it was state legislature, it'd be done. It's the Department of Justice that hasn't been willing to waiver, because they are so stringent on the ADA requirements. That's, it's that Department of Justice. And just as a note, when it came up earlier, that now you understand why, and I certainly understand why Ms. Copeland, when, when she and I talked about the last issue, said you guys didn't have the information. Of course you had the information, but because of the way it was on the agenda, that information was not on the agenda, it looked like you guys didn't have the information either. So that's come up a couple of times. It's come up a couple of different times as to where that is and what that timing is. Because if it's not sitting out there under the agenda item and you look at, like in the 920, it was presented to city council a week ahead of time, with the caveat that said, please call me, I'd like to talk to you about this. And then the county agreement came forward on Monday morning at 8:47, because after we'd gotten the certified copy from the records, Manatee County records, that was sent out on that Monday morning. So the documentation was there for council to be able to review, but was not there for the, be able to see the same thing. So the confusion was, it was an assumption you guys didn't have any of it, and you're just asked to make a decision. That's what that Bradenton Times article tried to insinuate. It's what Glenn tried to insinuate, you didn't have any information to make a decision on. That is not true. I explained that all during the workshop, at the last workshop, and went through all the timelines of when everything was presented for that reason. But, you know, the public doesn't get this, wasn't here to see that or hear that at that particular point in time.
Mr. Callahan, I'm gonna ask you point blank. As administrator of the city of Bradenton, are you hiding anything?
No.
Do you feel any of your staff throughout the whole city is trying to hide something?
It is absolutely not, because when I was clerk, we didn't have those constraints. We were not, it was easy to, to make sure everything was sitting out there, make sure everything went on the website. That's why you had the blue items out there, and it's gotten tougher the last three years because of the ADA issues. You used to see everything, which is presented. If you forgot something, or whatever else, it was sometimes, maybe somebody thought there should be something else included, but it wasn't an attempt to hide anything. It's just, you, you make decisions as to what you include in a packet or don't include in the packet based on information that you believe is necessary to be able to make a decision. If anybody, obviously staff is here, you know, every day, if there's questions from council or things that they think are necessary, the time is not in the meeting to ask that, it's, you're here every day to be able to ask questions. If you think there's something else that needs to be presented, or you'd like something else presented, that's fine, just ask for it, and, and it can be, and it can be provided.
Do you answer your emails seven days a week, basically 24 hours a day, if something comes in?
Pretty much.
Does Sharon do that?
More so than I do.
Exactly, and that's one of the things that I've learned, sitting up here, and I, I've, whether I have the authority to direct anyone to take a weekend off and relax and save your life from stressing out over things, that's very important. But I think that, that, and again, we're going forward with this new administration here, that we are going to be transparent. Anybody that calls gets my office basically, you know, all day. I have an assistant that answers the phone, gives me messages, and very rarely do I not call them back within 24 hours if I'm not sitting there. So we are planning and continuing to be transparent. I'm in the community, everyone here is in the community. We are getting calls, so we want to be transparent. There's some things that we're working through that I think are gonna be very important for us to continue to work through. And Mrs. Copeland, I've been here seven and a half years, a six-month break, and now back five weeks. I think you know me, I am very open to conversation. So how do we make it better, how do we work it for our citizens? But also, how do we be smart and not waste money? And how do we tell the truth? That's the most important to me. Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. When people talk about suing the city, I really want them to understand, you're suing, if you, if you live in the city, you're suing yourself, you're suing your neighbor across the street, you're suing the neighbor down the street. While someone looks at a city and says they have deep pockets, it's not that we have deep, we have everybody's pocket. So when you sue the city, you sue your neighbor and you're suing yourself. I'm not saying that you, if you believe you have a, a problem, and you think that's the only remedy, that you shouldn't pursue that, I just want that information out there. With regards to the information from Manatee County that came in after our packet went out, as I understand it, and somebody tell me if I'm wrong, Manatee County had public hearings on this, and it was approved in the public hearing process, is that not correct? So it did pass public muster. It just didn't get to us before the packet was available that Thursday afternoon. And as soon as you all got it, you made it available to us, but it was a public hearing, it was information from a public hearing that the county did. Am I correct?
The county sent out an RFQ on that, and then once they selected some, they negotiated that development agreement, and then, again, publicly approved that development agreement.
Thank you.
Now, the one thing that was, was not included, absolutely, was I, I took the copy that had been of record at Manatee County and submitted that to you, thinking it was a complete, complete copy, because it was coming from Manatee County records, because the intent, its requirement of the agreement was to record it. It did not include that Exhibit D. I didn't find, I wasn't paying that part of attention at the very end. Wasn't withheld, it was just, we, we sent over everything that had come over from the Manatee County records and included that to y'all.
And just one more thing, not, you don't necessarily have to call the city clerk or deputy clerk to get the information. On the agenda with the information, there is a website. So if you're at home at 10 o'clock at night and you're thinking, well, I can't call, well, you certainly can call and leave a message, but there's an email, and you can send that information request at any time. And I, I'm very happy when people do.
And Mrs. Koachman, did you have a follow-up, or?
I, well, so much has been said that I've been thinking. I just wanna say, Ms. Copeland, I apologize. Five weeks in, I wasn't sure how to handle that. But I, I don't know if it would be proper that if a citizen specifically asked me for information, if I can copy it and give it to that citizen. I wouldn't wanna start a precedent that a thousand people will be calling me and I, at my own expense, make copies, but is that something that I would have been able to do?
Mrs. Bochamp?
We're always here to help, so if you reach out to us and say, please send this document to Mrs. Copeland, that's how it would work. And you know that you can reach us pretty quickly and easily, and we would be happy to do that. We do like to hear from the council person before we reach out to a citizen, just to make sure everyone is in the loop and we're doing the right thing, and we have the right understanding of what is being asked for. But certainly, either way, you can certainly provide it yourself, or you can ask us to do so. And, and I've known Mrs. Copeland now for 27 years, and I, and we do pretty well communicating.
Well, it was on the weekend when I got the request.
If you email Sharon on the weekend, though, she'll probably answer.
I don't always have every single document at home or available to me, but we certainly get to it as soon as we can, or I can respond, you know, at that time.
Great, note to self, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Uh, Ms. Bochamp, my number one complaint from citizens on a daily basis has been for the last two years is the city doesn't return the phone calls, especially on the water bills. So for the record, could you address that for the, so, because I don't know what to tell them?
Our process is that if you call and leave a message in utility billing, that call is returned the same day. Now, we don't always reach a person, when we try to reach out to people, we don't always have success in connecting with them. There's multiple ways to reach utility billing, obviously. You can email the help desk, you can do a lot of things, and those are all on the bills, the ways that you can do that. I am assured, and I believe, that we try and reach everybody the same day.
Well, I've had some personal experience with that.
We've got a very limited number, I've got two, and now I'm up to four customer service clerks. We get, as you have seen, thousands of calls a month, so we do the best we can. We can't always answer every phone live, but we certainly do return calls.
Well, can we look into the cost of doing ADA like the county does? Can we look into that, see, and, and present it to the council and says, hey, it's worth it?
If the county has made a choice, their commission has made a choice to put everything on their website.
Right.
That's a choice that they made, and there might not be cost attached to that. Their documents may or may not be compliant, they may be putting non-compliant documents, I have no idea.
But like Mr. Sanders said, though, I, I agree with you, that we can look into. Like Mr. Sanders said, though, I agree with you that we can look into it.
They are modifying everything.
Let's look into it, because it would make our lives easier, if it would.
It would. I can tell you that documents take a good amount of time to take from just a chart or something that looks like this and to make it compliant. So that would probably mean people, that would have to be available as soon as a document is given to us. It's the time that it takes to convert it is, is where the problem lies.
Well, I'm going to ask if we can put this on the agenda in the next meeting.
Absolutely.
That, that, that we find out what the county is doing, and if they're circumventing the, the process of ADA, then they can tell us that, and they're taking the risk. That public information is more important than a lawsuit, then we'll have to make that same decision. Or if it's costing us something, can we do the same thing or tag on to their ADA requirements? To make, to make this more transparent to the public. That's, that's what it's all about. You know, it's, it's public information that we've got to do our very best to make it public if we can. And if there's a cost, then we need to know what that is, present it to the public and say, do you, let's, let's have a comment. Do you really want to spend that kind of money to get this information? Because I, I'm hearing we're not getting the information, and that's a problem.
Yes, sir, Mr. Callahan.
I think there's one other decision that will come into this that you'll want to consider, and we've, we've never liked it, because we've tried to be as responsive to the public as we, as we can be. But it is the timing of when you have to put agenda information in. If you have, right now, you have to have agenda information in by Wednesday afternoon so that we can compile it and get it out to you. If, in certain circumstances, if you have to meet other things, it may be you have to back it up to a week before, in that which case, you're slowing the process down, which we don't have a problem doing. But you may have to, because if you have to make documents ADA compliant, making them ADA compliant between Wednesday night at 5:00 and Friday morning, when these agendas are trying to go out, is something that can't happen. But if you use the week in between to say, okay, we're gathering documentation, we're putting in the form that's necessary. We've never wanted to do that, because we wanted to be as responsive and as quick as we can. But that is one alternative as to how you look at, at things and when you will address them on the council.
Right. I think that's good, and I think that will be on the workshop to get information so we can wordsmith it as much, so then it would come to the council at a meeting to talk about. Yes, sir.
In the agreement, which something, you know, everybody agrees with civility, that's, it's a no-brainer. But in that agreement, I did see that the council has the right to put items on the agenda. And I haven't been able, successful in the last two years of getting that done. So what, what is the rules for me as a councilman to get something on the agenda for the next, for the, I mean, what's, what's the administrat-
Okay, so, since, since I've got here, we have emailed every week before the agenda goes out, do you have any items you want on it? And I have not received one item back. Everybody received that. We talked about the workshop that you missed last time. If you have something on the agenda you want, get it to me.
But by what date?
Well, we're, Sharon's emailing it out, and Tamara's emailing it out. If, do you have anything you want on the next agenda? And again, it's by Wednesday.
Wednesday before.
Right, the Wednesday before, so.
You double-check it, because I'm not getting that, that email of present. I'm just getting the email that here it is.
No, it's going to every council legislation, so, you know.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I missed it, but I was-
And we've also talked about it at the meeting.
That's a good thing. Yeah.
That's been, that's, again, Mrs. Copeland knows. I've talked to her many times. We're going to be transparent. We're going to try, you know, and I mean, that's, that's the public. There is, you cannot not get a hold of me in this town for the last 32 years when I came home from school, college. And, you know, and I agree with you, Mr. Sanders, there's people I see everywhere, every day. Some complaints, and I've, and I've, I got a complaint about the, one of the same things you got, about couldn't get a hold of the water department. And I went in and sat down, and they showed me the call log of how many times they talked to them, how many times they responded to them. And I called that person back and said, well, on this date, you talked to them at this time, you did this and that. Oh, oh, yeah. Okay. So not that the citizen was, you know, not telling the truth, but we do keep tracking. And that department is, you know, wanting to do the right thing. So that's important. If they are, tell the truth, get it out there. If you have an issue, this staff here, in the whole city, what I've learned so far, which I knew before, is they don't sleep if something's wrong. They get frustrated. They want it. But they also want to make people happy. And that's important to keep them, you know, in that, especially in a pandemic time, when we've been so discombobulated. And, and again, that one, the, the young lady over there takes everything to heart sometimes in, in a way that you shouldn't at times. Because, you know, and I'm saying that in a good way, because you, you don't sleep if a citizen's not happy. And that's, that's important to me to say thank you, and what you do for your staff, and to keep it going. So, and, and all of them. I know Jim, you know, he's a little bit out there on some of it. But it's, it's 7:24 for our administrative staff, and it's important. So, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
If I might just add, if you are getting complaints about utility billing, that is one of my responsibilities, please let me know. I don't ever hear from you all, and I don't get calls from citizens that they're struggling with something going on in utility billing. I promise you, I always address it, and I would address it if I got it. So if you are struggling with a citizen in any way, and you're not having satisfaction with Lanson Utility Billing, please let me know.
Thank you. All right. So we have a resolution out there. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2102.
Is there a second? All right. Mrs. DeRoth and Mrs. Barnaby? All right. We'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3.
With much civility, yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rudisow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. There is a memo in your packet where I kind of outlined some of the topics for discussion as it relates to vacation rentals. This was an issue that Mrs. Barnaby raised in the, in the workshop, and the council asked to put it on an agenda, so that's why it's coming back to you now. Let me start with a little bit of the legislative framework that we're working within right now. The state has preempted the regulation of vacation rentals to this extent. Local governments may not prohibit vacation rentals. Local governments may not regulate the duration of a vacation rental. So you see, you know, in some areas, you'll see a 30-day minimum rental or something like that. That can no longer be done. Those had to have been in place prior to June of, of 2011. So where does that leave the city now if the city wants to go down this road of regulating vacation rentals? What you're seeing around the state in areas where they're, where they're being impacted, you will typically see some kind of licensing program. That can take many different forms. But, but some of the primary benefits of that are, you, you get a handle on, on, on where they are. You ensure that they're, that they're licensed with the state, because the state does require a license for vacation rentals. Make sure that they're paying their, their bed taxes and any other applicable taxes and fees that they may have. You get point of contact. That, that's something that is, is very typical in these regulations and that a lot of communities find to be important. They've got to have somebody to reach out to when there are issues. Often, you'll see some kind of inspection as, as part of that process, depending on, on what your, your regulations have. That could be, you know, looking at number of bedrooms, various life safety issues, parking, things like that. So, so licensing is one, is one aspect that, that you see frequently. I think what would, what would help me is if I kind of, I got a feel for, from the council for, what are the issues that you're seeing? You know, what are the things you're hearing about that, that you want to try to address? And where? You know, where are these things happening? Are they happening all throughout the city? Are they happening in certain areas? You know, does, does, do we want to take a citywide approach to, to regulating these things? Or is it something you want to look at, you know, maybe just in your single-family areas? Or, you know, in certain areas of the city? So those are kind of the, the types of things that I think would be helpful as far as, as starting the discussion so that we, at the staff level, can get together and, and try to prepare some type of ordinance.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that, literally, in the first 30 minutes that I walked into the Ward 2 office, I got a phone call about. And there, I, I, Ward 2 has numerous properties in our single-family residential areas that are functioning as Airbnbs, or VRBOs, or short-term rentals. I don't know exactly which term you want to prefer. But in my personal opinion, it's like taking a, someone's private home in a neighborhood and turning it into a Holiday Inn. Because when people go on vacation, it's a totally, you know, they're there to relax and have fun. If you are at a property that is designed for that, it's a whole different thing than if you're in somebody's neighborhood, you're on vacation, you want to stay out, you know, in the pool till 2:00 a.m., you want to rent someplace where you can bring all of your relatives over. And the major complaints that I have received have to do with the parking at these properties. Point of contact is very important. People, people don't know, you know, they try to figure out who to call, who the owner is, to say to them, are you aware of what's happening on your property? I think that it's important that we ask our, our fire department to do an ins, an inspection of these properties. Because if it's, if we go in and you've got what is supposed to be a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, two-bath house, and someone has taken every single room in the house and thrown bunk beds in it, that's a problem. So I, I also think that we ought to look at some sort of licensing and include the inspection with it. The other complaints that I have gotten has to do with garbage. People come in, they fill up the garbage, they're not aware of when the dates are that garbage is picked up. And many times, they're not going to be there. For example, in my neighborhood, it's, it's Monday through Thursday. But in some other areas, it's Tuesday and Friday. If they're not there, and they take it, the garbage to the street, and it's there for several days, and a dog knocks it over, or a raccoon gets in it and spreads garbage everywhere, that's an issue. So we may need to look at setting up some sort of service that they sign up for so that we know we need to check those properties for garbage so that it just doesn't become a whole neighborhood issue. Those are the things that, and let me also say, I think it needs to be citywide. Because if we institute this in, say, Ms. Coker's neighborhoods and the Ward 2 neighborhoods, and we don't have any kind of regulation in the other neighborhoods, where are the problem children going to flock to? They're going to flock to the neighborhoods where there's no regulation. And this is also my concern, because there are communities that do have a certain limited amount of regulation on them. And if we don't have anything, again, all the problem children are going to come to the city. And that's just my opinion on the matter.
Ms. Coker?
I saw something, and I think it just came in late yesterday or today, about, there's a bill in the legislature right now. And I think it's addressing everything that she talked about except for the owner notification. Have you looked at the bill? It's going to requi, I mean, you're required to have a license. Am I, did I read it wrong?
There is, the, the one bill that I'm aware of is included in your packet, and that is essentially a preemption bill. It's another, it is a bill that would further preempt the cities. It would prohibit the city from doing any type of licensing or inspections at the local level. And it would also prohibit the city from enacting any regulations on vacation rentals unless they applied to every type of residential use. So that, you know, obviously, it's early in the legislative process, so we don't know what's going to happen with that bill. But that is, that is a bill that has been filed.
Aren't they having to be required to get a license through the state, though?
They do. They are required now to have a license.
And they would have to provide everything. The only thing I didn't notice in there was having to have the owner notification, which I think is important, which brings me to, I, I think it'd be a good idea for us to have some kind of a legislative consultant that can be at these meetings. I mean, there's a meeting today, I guess, at 1:00. Anyhow.
That's something we can talk about, maybe a little further. But now, Mr. Sanders?
That bill's sponsored by Will Robinson and Gregory, is it not?
No.
It's not? That's another bill? That was the Braden, or the Florida Housing, I think, maybe they did. Never mind.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing I forgot to address, because the other big issue that I get complaints about is the noise issue. But that is very, very difficult to enforce. As it stands now, we do have the ability for our citizens, if there is an ongoing issue after a certain period in time, is it, is it 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock?
A week.
That, that they can call the police, and the police can go out there and ask them to kind of keep it down. But it is very difficult to have any sort of noise ordinance because of the difficulty of regulating it and decibels, and it just goes on and on and on. And y'all know more about it than I do, I think. So, some of you that were here dealing with, with motor works, so.
I don't think you want to bring it up again.
Yes.
Ms. Coker?
Well, what I'm saying is, I think that we need to be working through the, you know, it sounds to me like we're going to be preempted anyway, since we didn't have something in place by 2011. So we need to maybe be working to get what we want into this bill. It'll be a state license. But, I mean, it takes the liability off of us as well with the, what is it, the Burt or Fart, that lawsuit where you?
Burt Harris.
Burt Harris, yeah.
Burt Harris is, is something that has, that has come up relatively often in the vacation rental context. But typically, that is when the local governments regulate occupancy. So that's obviously another potential feature of a rental ordinance, but the occupancy has been the one that has triggered the most response in terms of Harris claims.
Mr. Callahan?
I think one thing to, to, not to, I mean, I, this is just a, a kind of a recommendation, and I heard from Will when we were over at the meeting. I don't think you don't move forward with your, your ordinance just thinking that it's going to be a foregone conclusion for the legislature. Legislature has passed this before. But the governor has vetoed it before. So keep in mind that if you still think you want something to officially get on your books, you may want to do it anyway, because it's not a foregone conclusion that it would be preempted just because the legislature decides to do it. So just keep that in mind as you're kind of working through this process.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So the, the only city in our whole region that, that was ahead of the 2011, you know, safeguard was Longbow Key. Now, I know that this is an issue that's been at the Minnesota League of Cities ever since then, when the island cities, Anna Maria, Holmes Beach, mainly, and a little bit of Bradenton Beach, have been fighting this for, ever since. And, and so they would be the local leaders on what, what you can do. And this is one of those deals where the lobbying, the people that are lobbying for these Airbnbs are a very powerful group. It's, it seems to be coming out of the Consimy area. And they really got the ear of the legislature. So if anything you do, there's, I, I'm all for us moving ahead on anything anyone wants to do. But it's going to be one of those things where you're going to be moving ahead, and it's going to be whack-a-mole, you know? That's, because that's what I've been watching the, the island cities fighting with, that they spent a lot of time and money in, in lobbying, trying to get ahead of this thing. And two steps forward- this thing. And two steps forward, one step backwards is kind of what they've been doing. So, but I'm all for moving forward. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be frustrating, is all I can tell you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no problem with the two-prong approach. Let's, let's talk and put our, our wish list in with the legislature. Let's also get something on the books, if we can.
So, Carl?
I think during our discussion, when, when, when Mr. Roth and I were over at the meeting, Will Robinson kind of let us know the, kind of the lay of the land on, on what was going on there. And, you know, he had been out there in committee against it last year, and was kind of the lone wolf.
Right.
And that's where you run up against it, is that you get a lot of people from a lot of other places.
Right.
And, and what, and the nature of, like it is here, you know, it is, there is politics involved. And, and how far do you go and get out of line with, or in step with the rest of, of your, your committee members or the whole legislature?
Leadership.
So, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's just certainly the way it is from that perspective. He's very aware of, of the issues. He's very aware, because he represents this area that has had some huge problems, and has been supportive in the past. But sometimes your votes may not reflect 100% how you really feel, because it's just the nature of what they have to do sometimes.
All right. So, next steps would be to direct Attorney Rudeisal to come up with a, a?
Yes, I, I can certainly start putting something together. Obviously, it's going to implicate a lot of areas, so we'll probably have a, some kind of a working group at the staff level to look at, at all of these different, different features. One thing that would help before I, before we stop today, are, is there, is there a consensus, or is there any thought for, does the city want to go down the road of the occupancy limitations? Do you want to look at some occupancy limitations? And do you, how aggressive do you, do you want to be with that?
Ms. Coker?
I would be very afraid of, of getting sued. I don't want to get us into, because I think it'll happen.
Ms. Barnaby?
I would just like to look at, perhaps, let, if, if you can do some research and show us what didn't work versus what could work. Again, it sounded like to me, one of, when I, when I looked online, somebody had taken basically a three-bedroom, two-bath house in a residential area, and turned just about every space where they could throw in a bunk bed. And, you know, so that they could, they could potentially have twenty-five or thirty people in this three-bedroom, two-bath house. And that's when you really start having the issues, because you have the garbage, and you have the, all the parking, and you have the amount of people. So, we may be able to address it in other ways, Mr. Rudeisal, but maybe if you can put on your Tom Terrific thinking cap, and, I know, Google it, you're too young, you don't know who Tom Terrific was.
Okay.
So, it's basically you come up with what's out there?
Going for something?
What can be done. And I, because again, if, if they can put fifty people in a house for the weekend and sleep everywhere, is that something that should be allowed, or, or can we not regulate that?
We can, we can certainly regulate it. So, I'll look at that. Probably some combination of, you know, basing it on number of bedrooms, or available parking, square footage, something like that. We can try to come up with something that-
I was just looking at, right here, Anna Maria says, "Two persons per bedroom contains 100 square feet or more." I mean, this, we're just copying Anna Maria's, they've covered that.
Well, Anna Maria also had a maximum of eight, regardless of number of bedrooms, and that's what, that's what got them with seventy Harris claims.
I know. Oh, this is going to be, yeah. I know, I know what this is.
All right. So, this is direction to, to bring something back to us?
And sooner rather than later, please.
All right. All right. Anything else on?
Well, should we discuss trying to get someone to work for us for, I, I'd like to see us get a consultant or somebody to be working.
Are you talking to a lobbyist for us?
I'm talking about a lobbyist. I, I think a city our size should have someone representing them in, in Tallahassee. I mean, that's my opinion.
What have we had in the past, or anything? Have we had anything in the past?
Nothing that I'm aware of. We've always worked with this Florida League, or through our direct legislative delegation, or through you guys, when you go to Tallahassee on your, on your days, that you meet with your legislators.
I, I brought this up in the past, basically, through, through the Minnesota League of Cities. I've been lobbying on behalf of the city through the League of Cities for, for years. And, and I brought up having a lobbyist in the past, having worked with lobbyists from other cities and seen, it, it would be a new budget item. And then you choose whether you're going to have a federal lobbyist or a state lobbyist. I think state's probably more valuable than the federal. I've worked with lobbyists through the county, at the federal level, and I've worked with other, other cities at the state level. It's certainly worth it. It's probably anywhere, it's, it'd probably be at least seventy thousand a year to have a lobbyist. It will help you if you've got that much of, and it could be higher than that, depending on what, what you're, you know, what you think you need, and what you've got in local representation. So, anyway, I, I proposed it in the past. It's, it's never, I've always been told we don't need one in the past, so, and I've done it, done it myself. And so, I mean, I, I'm up for it. I, I think that there, but we would have, we would have to work that into budget.
Right. One of the things I think is important now, agreeing with you, we probably need one, and in this day and age in COVID, we are not going to have as much access as individuals. So, maybe a lobbyist could be something that, you know, I'd want to know all the logistics of it, but I don't know how that would, would play down, and how much it would cost. And, and again, is that something if we wanted?
It's a lot of money.
Now to put into it? Is there?
We can look into the cost.
Right.
Who uses, who uses one locally, what the cost that they're experiencing for that?
Yeah, I know that the island cities have engaged lobbyists primarily on this issue, so they could be a resource there.
Well, I think with, obviously, I don't think there's going to be as many chamber trips and different things that we're going up with this year. So, you know, even if it's a, a year-to-year thing, we can figure out and how we do it. So, is that something that, that, again, I got on my workshop information for next week to get a little bit more information, discuss it, and then see where we go? Is that the pleasure?
I'd always look for it.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you. Ms. Bochamp, unfinished business?
There's none for today.
Okay, council reports, and we will start in Ward Three.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, I wanted to point out, we went through the consent agenda, but one of the items in there was stormwater flooding in Village of the Arts, which we've been working on since the Tapestry Project. Well, I don't remember how many years ago that was, but we've, we've had great successes over there. This is something where, basically, we've got an old, oldest part of the city, which is also in a low-lying area, and all the water has normally been channeled off to Where's Creek, to the, to the west. So, what Jim has come up with here, obviously, is, is we have some underutilized stormwater retention areas to the east, and allowing the overflow to go that way. So, this is the beginning part of going to be, city, county, swift mud, multi, it's, it's, it's a big dollar item. This is the beginning start of it. But, you know, dealing with stormwater, dealing with stormwater is, is very hard, very expensive, and, you know, it, it's nice to have this going. It's, I know it's been taking us long. I know, I've been talking to Jim for this for a long time. So, I was glad to point that out, that this is something we did today. And hopefully, it's going to be a while, while coming, but it will help some areas that are chronically, chronically flooding. Next thing, I wanted to get to, I wanted to ask Carl about, because I know I've been talking to him, where we are with our Planning Director search. We, we made a decision to hire a headhunter, subcontract person to help us with this. We were, we were, they were hired by the council. We did council interviews. I think it was before you knew people came on. Did you talk to them?
I did talk to them.
Did you talk to them?
It was right as we were coming on.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we've been doing that. And then the long-term plan was going to be that we wanted to see how this is going to work, because we've got right behind the city planner, we're looking at a city administrator position. So, what I want to do is see what they've come up with on applications, just to look at, because I, I know what we've been doing at trying to do it in-house. I'm hoping they've come up with a higher quality of people coming in. But I, I don't have anything to judge their work by. I know that we contracted them somewhere around 20,000. And, and then basically, by looking at what they've done, will help me see how good a job they're doing, because we've got more work in the future. So, I just wanted to ask about that.
Done a very good job. I think the application process just closed Friday, last night. But that didn't stop him from getting information to us as far as potential applicants. When they come in, he continues to keep kind of a, a ranking in order, you know? And he supplants as, as people get better or worse. I think the real question is, how do you ultimately want to handle this? Because what I'm a little afraid of is, give you too many names, we go right back to where we were. You know, even if you have eight qualified candidates, you still are now deciding amongst eight qualified candidates, and there's a lot of decisions to be made from five different people. I don't know how you want to proceed. Do you want to bring, like, the top four, top five? Because if we give it to you, again, we, the reason we went to problems, then we started ranking them, and everybody had different rankings.
Right.
And that, you know, part of the beauty of hiring Colin was saying, he has thirty-some years' experience. And if he thinks these people are, should be high-ranked people based on the qualifications and discussions with you all, that it should probably be a fairly limited number of people that, that we would be sitting there going, hey, take these, and, and let's figure out how, how to go. Because I think what he wants to be able to say is, if he brings you the top four, he's thinking, he may in his mind have one that's won, but he thinks they're all qualified and capable and should be eligible for hire for your job. And that's where we are.
So, my, my thinking, having learned from experience in the past, is that the beauty of going with, you know, a professional search team was that they can do that, and get us, get us closer to the finish line. And I do know that what caught us the last time was, ironically, we had two candidates that wanted, basically, one passed because his elderly mother didn't want to move to Florida in COVID, and then turns around, and candidate number two, exact same thing, didn't want to move, her elderly parents here from Miami. So, and I know we can't ask, do you have any elderly parents that you're going to be moving? Because if you do, we're, I'm not interested.
I think that's part of the process, that he can do better than we do. He can ask questions, those people that are applying to him, and use his references to talk to people to find out that are they truly viable candidates, who have an expressed desire to him? If they're currently in another job, leave their job to come here. If they're not, come here from wherever they may be, if they're in another state. Those are the questions that he flat-out asked them during this timeframe, which he has been doing with them.
Okay. So, I'll just wrap this up and then let others go on this, because this is going to be the end of my discussion, is, so, yeah, my, so, what I told him was, when I talked to him on the phone, you know, amaze me, and there's more work coming your way. So, you know, and I, I do trust the whole beauty, the, the thought of it was, I would like him to, to whittle it down, so we don't have to do that amongst ourselves, because that gets kind of, you know, we start weighing three, two, two, three, how do we get to the middle? You know, it's kind of like bargaining, or bidding on a horse, or something like that. So, yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to get this moving.
Yeah, he's expecting a call from me, from the last stuff he sent me, which was just yesterday.
And then, and then I'd like to move ahead on the next step.
Mr. Sanders?
That was what I was going to say, that most of our problem in the past has not been necessarily candidates, but it's been because we took too long to get back to them. You know, they wanted a job this year, not next year, you know?
Yeah, he, that's one of the things, he keeps them on, on the line, to say, he keeps in constant communication to say-
So, once he hears it down to four, give us the list, and let's go.
Now, we've got to move. We're down at the end of the day.
Right. Don't wait three months, because they found something else. All right.
Mrs. Coachman?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just responding to his, yeah, no, I've got a couple others.
Council report, yes, sir.
Right. I, I'd like to bring up, for discussion, maybe at a workshop or the next meeting, because I, I'm firm believer that, you know, transparency, and that we need to ask everybody first what their thoughts are, and have time to absorb it, not just make a, draw a gun and shoot. So, infrastructure, I get a lot of complaints about infrastructure, and I know we've done a fairly good job with our paving program. And I know Mr. Roth says he took claim for it, and Mr. Brown says he takes claim for it, but it doesn't matter now, because I think, I think we're not getting in front of it as fast enough, and we need to have more infrastructure with sewer, storma-sure, paving, sidewalks. And I'd like to, you know, people to start thinking about this. Do we, do we budget for it? I think we, I think we're, I think, I don't think we're catching up fast enough. And I, Mr. McClellan may disagree with me, because I've talked to him about it, but I think we need to, in my personal opinion, is maybe double it. And we don't want the whole city tore up at one time. I understand your concern on that, but we, I think we're not, we're not getting to some of the things before some of the things fail again. You know, we fix one problem, then two fail, you know? So, I'd like to see that infrastructure boosted up a little bit, whether it comes out of reserves, or whether it comes out of bonding, because bonding right now is very cheap. I mean, 1% or whatever. So, and I know the cost of stuff, five years from now, will be more than the, the interest that we would pay if we go ahead and, and do the work. So, I want you to, I'd like you to think about that. We can workshop it, or you can discuss it more here, whenever. The second item I would like to introduce is an abatement program for infield development for our citizens to build new houses, remodel new houses, and abatement programs in other cities have worked like this, that they're generally a five-year abatement, tax abatement, that encourages them to build a new home, or remodel a new home, and it can be expanded. Some of them do it on a 20, 40, 60, 80 prorated basis. Some of them do it just five flat years. And they've been very successful in other cities. And I, because City of Braden doesn't have a lot of, of space like Manatee County does for development. So, we've got, and I see a lot of empty lots, and a lot of structures that need rehabbed. And I think if we had some incentives to encourage that, it, it might help. It's, it's worked in other areas, so put that, I'd like to have that on the agenda, wherever you want to place it, but I'd like to have some thoughts on that, how that would work. And that's all I have.
All right. No, and I think that's, that's perfect for workshops, because we can get more information, and then we can decide a direction, and then get it on an agenda of a council meeting to go forward. But I think it, again, these, these meetings are more for business stuff, get it done, and then the workshops are there. And I'm, I'm very open to having a workshop five days a week if we have to. So, you know, whatever we need to do. You know, I know that doesn't, but again, if we need to get stuff done, we can do it. So, I don't, I didn't think it was going to be that funny, but.
I'm here five days a week.
Four days a week.
You can't see the reaction.
I know, like, okay.
Yeah, you're not going to be a very popular man if you keep that stuff up.
Very transparent, though. So, Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to make a correction. I referred to Ms. Copeland by her first name, and I don't want to take advantage of knowing you personally, because I really respect you as a concerned citizen. You know, she's going to keep us on our toes, and I really appreciate that. But what I also want to say is, I am going to start my Zoom side chats pretty soon with members of my community that's in the works, still getting it all divided and so forth. I was happy to hear that, the mentioning of the project on 13th Avenue, it's, it's definitely going to help with things. And it just lets Ward Five know that we're working for you. Also, Mayor, I, I'm looking forward to the workshops. That's how I learn, but four days a week, I don't know about.
I was kidding.
I know. I know. I, I really don't have a whole lot of meat to, to discuss, but I just want to say, I'm looking forward to also being on the CRA, because I'd like to hear more and do more about some of the properties here in the city. But I guess, really, what I wanted to say also was, go Bucks. We, we did it, guys, we did it. It was because of us that the Bucks, because I, and I had a neighbor that wanted to emulate, like, we were in the stadium, and each touchdown, there was this really cannon-like firework that were going on. cannon-like firework that were going on. After about the third one, though, I think some, you know, some other neighbors said, uh. Um, and lastly, um, I wanna wish everyone here and also the entire city of Bradenton, Happy Valentine's Day. This is the friendly city, which means we love each other.
Thank you. Ms. Coker?
I don't really have much of a report. We already pretty much discussed the main thing. I, I would really like to see us look into having some kind of a legislative consultant that can represent our issues and be at that table. Um, I've, I worked in Tallahassee for a lot of years and I know the decisions that are being made. And if you've got someone that knows all the staffers and knows, knows all the ins and outs and who's, you know, there's always a political power struggle going on and so I think we need to have that for us. And so that's why, that was the main thing I wanted to bring up and Happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day. Uh, would also like to bring to your attention, as I, I am a member of the Service Club of Manatee County. It is the oldest women's organization in the city of Bradenton. And on March twentieth, we are going to be having our virtual fundraiser. This is something that we've done in person in the past and this year we're doing a virtual one. If you are interested in finding out more about it and as well, finding out more about the Service Club's mission, uh, it's all on our website, but we do raise money for underserved children in Manatee County. And in the last, uh, I mean, it started in nineteen twenties making sandwiches for kids that didn't have lunch. And in the last, uh, probably, I've, this is my eighth year, we have donated hundreds of thousands of dollars in the community because people have supported us. So if you would like to participate, if you would go to manateeserviceclub.com, there's a big banner that, on the website and you click on that and it tells you all about it. And I would thank you for doing that and so would the children that we serve. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to add is to send, uh, sympathy and condolences to the families of the Avalos family and to the Goodwin family, um, to individuals that, that I, or their family that I know that have lost young men that they loved very much. So sympathies and thoughts and prayers to the Avalos and the Goodwin family.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby. And I'm gonna do something without asking Mr. Roth or Mr. Sanders that, uh, might be good. We also would like to wish our special women Happy Valentine's Day, now that the, the three women got it out there, so, uh, no, but, um.
Thank you for saving. I owe you one, thank you.
Yeah, no, so, but anyway, um, couple things. Obviously, go Bucks. I mean, it's huge for this area, being, whether you're a big Bucks fan or not, it's, it's fun to watch and it brings a lot of camaraderie to our town, so it's very important. Remind everybody in the room, workshop next Wednesday at nine o'clock. So, uh, no one intended, so, kidding. Um, then, then obviously echo Ms. Barnaby's with, uh, with the Avalos and the Goodwin family. And also, um, our community lost an icon in Rodney Potter, a few, a few weeks ago and, uh, his funeral was last Saturday. But, but Rodney is one of those guys that, that never said no to anything to help the community and, uh, been around it the whole time. And one, one of the things we lost is the history of a lot of our town. And that's one thing that Rodney really gave. And one of the things that I said at the funeral was, you know, when you look at things, what would Rodney do? Because you always knew Rodney was gonna do the right thing and that's what I think everyone up here wants to do and every one of, and the community and our staff wanna do so. So Rodney's gonna be greatly missed and, uh, not just from his family standpoint, but from the whole town and the whole construction town more than anything, 'cause he was always there to help with being at Lewis Lumber, to Wick's Lumber, to Leeds Lumber, to all the names of it as you go through. So that's very important. Um, and I don't think anything else, other than I do wanna read into, into the record. Anyone wishing to view supporting documents for agenda items, please contact Tamara Melton, Deputy Clerk at nine four one, nine three two, nine four six three, or at cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com twenty-four hours a day, because it is very important. We wanna get you the information and we wanna do it right without costing the taxpayers any more money or seeming that we are trying to hide something. So that's very important to me. Um, that's all I have and we'll go to department heads. Start with Jim.
Um, you've seen in the newspapers recently of the cyber attack that occurred to a water system in our nearby community. Timing is everything. I will tell you that as part of the American Water Infrastructure Act that was passed in two thousand and eighteen, the city was required to submit by December thirty-first of this past year, a risk assessment of our water system, including cybersecurity. Uh, without giving any information related to how the wheres and the whys, our system is well-protected from cybersecurity, partly because of the way in which we're configured. Uh, remote access of the type that occurred in this case is not something that we utilize. Uh, so I just wanted to give you some, uh, rest assured that we are on top of that and, um, the risk assessment was submitted and, um, that is basically an update to the plan that was required as part of, um, the post-nine-eleven water infrastructure threat assessments. So, um, we are on top of that and I, I hope it helps you sleep at night to know that.
Thank you. And I'd probably just to bring one thing up and, you know, with bringing that up and we don't have it as a department, um, head now or whatever, but that's something I will be bringing forward. Our IT department is one of the, the best out there and I think that's probably why it's there and figuring it out. So that's something that, you know, we will be bringing up in the, the near future about how important they are to us and what we can do to make that department better.
Absolutely. Our IT department was intimately involved in our assessment of our system and how, how, how we can protect it, so.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Edwards there? Chief, nothing? All right. Uh, Chief, I would like you to come up and ask one question about something I heard earlier on one of our, um, presentations and just have you kinda put it on the record, especially with the new council people.
Sure.
Um, talked about speed tablets or different things in that and, uh, I've been back and forth on them and when I was on the council on that, but tell us what the fire department believes about that and why.
We really try to stay away from them. Um, I know they serve their purpose, but, uh, it destroys our trucks. You've got, um, you know, these heavy engines that carry water, you know, that are water tanks on them, just rattles them to death, slows them down to a standstill. We travel through the neighborhoods and pack, basically, when we run, go into a fire. It just slows the whole process up for that and same with the ambulance. They have the same complaint about it, about, you know, if you're, you've got anybody in the back of the coaches, it's, it just rattles them to death. So, um, those are a few of the reasons, but it's, it really takes a toll on our equipment.
And one of the things that I heard, um, because that's probably one of the biggest complaints I got at first years ago, you know, slowing traffic down. And I think our public works has done a great job at coming up with alternatives to that in a way, but I noticed the county is actually taking some out or some of their projects that they're not gonna put them in now and they're gonna come up with other ways, because they said, if you're in the back of an ambulance and thirty or sixty seconds makes, whether it saves your life getting to the hospital or not, that could slow you down that much. So that is a thing, and again, I just heard it, that it's gonna be discussed, so right now the city doesn't have any because of protection for our fire and ambulance and that, so, Mrs. Barnaby?
Um, Chief, just to bring me up to speed, how much did, different, give me just a ballpark, different apparatus, how much they cost? I seem to remember when we got the heavy rescue, how much that was, but that was...
We're looking to possibly replace that heavy rescue with an engine and you're looking at probably almost three-quarter of a million dollars. So, yeah, they're not cheap. I mean, we, we get the most we can out of these engines, we take good care of them, uh, good service on them and everything, but, um, some of these, you know, the new aerial we've got, it's a million-dollar piece of equipment, so. We've tried to go down to some of the smaller ones for our quick-attack trucks. Um, we've, we've gone here locally and, and cut way down on it, but, uh, again, you've just got so much equipment that you've gotta carry and have all these, these things and the size of the tank, I mean, you're, you're looking at big equipment, so it's, um, it's costly.
They ain't cheap.
Mr. Sanders?
Can you fight a fire on this twelve-story building?
We can with a tower, but you're, you're stretching it. You're, you're ten stories.
Really?
Yeah. It's a, it's a hundred footer. You know, we have one out of Station Three that's, that I believe is eighty-seven, um, but the tower reaches up to a hundred.
So what do we do with our, uh, twelve-story buildings or our hotel at eight, what, what were?
You've got systems in there and you're not gonna be able to reach them with an aerial or anything like that. You've got, you've got stairwells and everything that are pressurized and you've got different suppression systems in them, you know, for that reason, for our high rises.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
I'd like to echo the sentiments on the Bucks, go Bucks. Uh, we were fortunate to have several officers up there assisting Tampa, um, and the Federals up there, uh, primarily Lieutenant Giddens, Sean Gow and Officer Carpenter, who are on the Riverwalk area, also with some of the team hotels. The ones that team hotels had to be tested, COVID-tested every day, always came back negative. Uh, Officer Nichols was with the Human Trafficking Task Force. They made over a hundred arrests up there. Um, Officer Ian Emmerich was on our motor unit, uh, escorting the teams around and I think the whole reason he's here right now, Officer McGowan was featured in the, uh, Bradenton Update yesterday. I think he's here to autograph any photos, if you all printed those out. So he's holding the Lombardi Trophy.
Seriously?
Thank you.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Bochamp?
I don't have anything either, thank you.
Mr. Callahan, nothing further? All right, anything for the good of the whole here, anybody? Well, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.